Okay, good morning. Welcome, everybody. This is a special City Council meeting of the Saint Helena City Council, Tuesday, May 30, 2017. Mr. Ellsworth, would you lead us in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Carl.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Koberstein.
Here.
All right. The next item is public comment, but again, this is a special session, not a general session, so public comment is only pertinent to items that are actually on our agenda. And I propose, again, with the council's permission, that we would take up public comment with respect to those items that are subject to specific discussion as we get to them, rather than at the beginning. So that would then take us to the consent calendar. We have two items on consent. Consideration proposed approval of a resolution approving the SHES/SHPS parent-teacher group to have mobile food vendors at Crane Park. And the second is the chamber contract. I assume the chamber contract is going to be removed from the consent calendar.
Yes, please.
All right. So with respect to 4.1, does anybody else wish to take it off the consent calendar? If not, the Chair will undertake a motion to approve item 4.1 on consent.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Koberstein.
Yes.
Ellsworth.
Yes.
Doring.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes. That takes us to 4.2, which is consideration of the chamber contract. The issue before us is whether to approve the contract. The staff on this is Ms. Mitz.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to say on this. It's, this is, we currently have a two-year contract with the Chamber of Commerce for $2,010,000, $210,000 per year. What we're looking at doing is just doing a one-year extension to that two-year contract for the same amount as we had before.
All right. Is there any initial council discussion before I open up to public comment?
You know, my thought was that we would be reviewing this after we had gone through the budget. And what I would like to do, and I would move that we move this item 4.2, so that it's after 5.2.
Well, it seems to me that what we should do is decide whether we're going to approve or disapprove the contract. If we approve it, it's approved. If it's disapproved, then it would be appropriate for it to be considered under 5.2.
My thought is that it's part of the discussion. I think 5.2 informs 4.2.
I mean, I'm ready to vote on it now, but I would like to hear from the public.
All right.
Yeah.
So let me open it up for public comment at this point. This is 4.2, the chamber comment, contract.
Okay. My name is Bobby Monnet, and I'm speaking as a resident of Saint Helena. First, I want to say that I appreciate the chamber's interest in the well-being of Saint Helena business community. I also appreciate that the chamber's efforts to recruit as many tourists as possible to spend money in our town may conflict with the goals of many Saint Helena residents, who fear that their quality of life is being diminished due to the claimed success of the chamber efforts. The chamber advertises that they want high-quality, low-impact visitors to come to our city. Their slide presentation included a flow chart of the advantages and positive impacts that the proceeds from an increase in these high-quality tourists would provide. It included attracting second homeowners to Saint Helena, which would increase our property tax base. However, there was no flow chart or any reference at all to what the negative impacts that their low-impact efforts were avoiding, or what measures they were taking to avoid them. Instead, they touted their mass media marketing. To my mind, this is an oxymoron. Marketing to both high-quality, low-impact tourists and everyone else in the world at the same time cannot possibly result in a low impact to the residents, visitors, and even the businesses in this city. I feel manipulated by this language, which sounds like disingenuous hype, and it undermines my confidence in the chamber and trust that they are listening to the concerns of many Saint Helena residents in a meaningful way, in a way that is not defensive and defiant. Some negative impacts already resulting from the success claimed by the chamber include an increase in the number of buses and shuttles in town, driving through and parking in our neighborhoods, proliferation of venues that produce noise, additional parking demands, public safety and traffic congestion, an increase in the number of second homes, and the resulting gutting of our neighborhoods, et cetera. Should the chamber's efforts get credit for these consequences as well as the revenues? The chamber claims that it's not political. I don't agree. In 2014, the chamber endorsed Mario Scalotti for City Council. 2016, there was a guest commentary written about the candidates. There was talk in favor of Measure D, and the P-bid was presented to the council. I have no problem with these issues. I think the chamber should do that. I'm not saying they shouldn't have. I'm just saying that it is political, or at least it could appear to be political, and that could create a conflict of interest for our elected officials if a high-ticket grant is approved. I think that should be considered. But most importantly, before spending more money to increase the number of tourists in our town, should we figure out how we will know, to the extent we can know, when the critical mass of tourists has created an inverse relationship between the number of visitors that come to Saint Helena and the quality of life of Saint Helena residents? Can we afford this contract? Could we direct?
Can you please complete your comments?
Okay, I have one more thing. The comments raised today, together with other economic issues currently facing the city, suggest to me that it is the fiduciary duty of the council to approve far less than the amount being asked for in the contract before you. Sometimes, less is more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Barr, 2480 Spring Mountain Road. We all appreciate our Main Street businesses, and we want to see them thrive. They're not just shopkeepers. They're our friends and our neighbors, and obviously, an essential part of what makes up our community. But we're not talking about how much we regard them. We're talking about a business contract. So rather than hire an independent expert in marketing, two years ago, Saint Helena inexplicably, to me, decided to hire a lobbying organization instead of a marketer, the Chamber of Commerce, whose specific, self-described main purpose is to protect the narrow interests of about 6% of our population. That doesn't even include every business on Main Street, nor every person who holds a business license, and certainly not the 94% of our town's residents. So before making a decision on renewing this contract, I'd urge you to ask several questions. First of all, is hiring the chamber either practical, or is it ethical? Is it appropriate or even possible for an organization that lobbies city government on behalf of a small minority of the overall population to also be employed by that same city government to represent the interests of the majority of the residents? You can only answer yes if the interests of the business community completely overlap with the interests of the general population, but I don't think that they do. Not if the chamber's ultimate goal in marketing Saint Helena on the citizens' behalf is to also improve the bottom line of their membership by attracting more and more tourism. In reality, with this marketing contract, you're asking citizens to pay twice for each tourist who comes to town, once, $210,000, to attract them, and then a second time to pay for the damage to three and a half million visitors we already get annually inflict on our infrastructure, that's water, roads, sewer, traffic, and general quality of life. To explain this away, the old Reagan trickle-down trope, "A rising tide floats all boats," was used again this year in the chamber's annual report, but they've offered absolutely no empirical evidence to support that conclusion. Which takes us to the next question you should ask. In the staff report, $210,000 fee is called an investment. So what's the return on that investment? Can the chamber show us data that proves their specific marketing efforts, not the county's marketing, generates additional sales tax and TOT returning to the general fund that exceeds the $210,000 we've invested? I've seen nothing at all to indicate that kind of a dividend. If we have no metric beyond counting cars and visitors to the welcome center to determine whether we're making or losing money on this investment, then that seems like a lousy use of public funds. And the last question. What exactly does the chamber do to market Saint Helena for its citizens that it's not already doing for its membership? Apparently, $15,000 is used to hire a marketing firm, which I thought we were paying them to do. And the lion's share, $124,000, seems to be paying for the rent and staffing of the welcome center, a place that most locals never have and never will visit. But if they did, they'd find out that the welcome center is also the Chamber of Commerce's offices. And the available brochures appear to represent the members' businesses. Which returns us to the original question, almost wrap it up here. How can the chamber ethically serve both their members and the general population simultaneously? The answer is that under this contract, they're not actually expected to. All that's expected is that the general fund money be used for nonspecific marketing efforts geared to improving profits for local businesses while doing nothing provable to enhance the lives of the population at large. I am not opposed to using public funds to promote Saint Helena. In fact, I think we absolutely should, and we should renegotiate the contract with the chamber so that everything that they spend money on should be for the good of the entire community. Fourth of July fireworks, everybody enjoys that, as do the tourists. Christmas decorations. Why should Wayne and Marcus have to run around, knock on doors, to raise money?
Can you complete your remarks at your time?
This is the end of it. They shouldn't. We should also fund the Harvest Festival, the summer concerts, Lyman Park, and anything that will enhance the value of promoting this town, both for residents and for tourists alike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tracy Sweeney, 1407 Kearney Street. I'm speaking today as a business employee and as a resident. You are about to embark on your budget discussions, and you only have, as a city, three sources of income. So we're talking a lot, we hear a lot every day about how we're going to spend money. People come up here and parade through all the things that the city should be doing, but you can't do any of those things if you don't have revenues. TOT, our tax coming in from our hotels, is a one primary source. Sales tax, the tax that we get from people spending money here in town, and then property tax. Jeff, you often speak, you don't want people to move, you don't want people to sell their homes for large sources of money. That's where your property tax is going to change. Otherwise, it's a fixed annuity, thanks to Prop 13. So the other two areas where we can actually see growth and still keep people local. With our TOT tax, we don't have a lot that's going to grow there either. We have been fighting ourselves for years to not grow our population of hotels. We have Los Alcambos online, and yes, there's some parking problems around Los Alcambos. I'm with Behringer, we feel them more than most of you. But I will tell you right now, it is, we have been also in here looking at budget meetings and budget discussions where the only thing getting us out of the red is the TOT we're all expecting to see from Los Alcambos. The other piece is sales tax. And the Chamber of Commerce worked very diligently to bring our local businesses around to supporting sales tax. The sales tax increase, Measure D, yes, it was a political fight, but it was something that most businesses were not supportive of. When taxes go up, when sales tax goes up, spending goes down. So the Chamber of Commerce spent diligent efforts, working with all the local businesses, helping them understand that the city needed Measure D to pass. Measure D passed. So we are seeing the impact from Measure D, in a large part, to the efforts of the chamber. And yes, many of you do not want to see additional tourists come in, but we want to see our local hotels be full, they're already here, and we're not marketing for, during the summertime, we're talking about off-season. So again, if you're about to embark on a budget discussion, you need to see where your revenues are going to come from, and if you shut off one big source of the promotion around revenue, I think it's going to be a real problem for you down the road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Yes, please.
My name is Katie Sampael. I'm a resident of Saint Helena, and I'm also on the Executive Board of the Chamber of Commerce. I need to read. Since last week's presentation, a few issues and concerns have been voiced that we would like to clarify. We did bring a list of our active members for anyone who would like to review them. We are proud of our members, and we promote them, because that is our job. That is all a Chamber of Commerce does, is promote commerce for its members. It's the very definition, it's in our name, it's the nature of what we do. We do not hand out, however, our membership's personal information. I understand that that was an issue. It has been brought to our attention that it's not easy to find a list of our members on our website, so we are going to be reviewing that to make sure. We were under the impression that it was, but we're going to take that under consideration and see if we can't make that a little bit more obvious and more instinctive on our One key misunderstanding about the contract with the city is that this money does not fund the chamber. The chamber funds the chamber. We do that through dues, programming, sponsorships, and other revenue streams. The city contracts with the chamber to do marketing. You would not be defunding the chamber by eliminating the contract. You would be hamstringing our city by not promoting it to the tourists who affect our general fund. Last week's presentation did show our three strategic priorities, which are marketing, advocacy, and committee engagement. Chamber dues pay for some marketing, but mostly, it pays for advocacy and community engagement. The contract, along with the Saint Helena TID and Visit Napa Valley grant, pays for most of the destination marketing. As our Chair said during the presentation last week, if the marketing contract is eliminated or significantly reduced, we will have to shift our focus from community engagement into destination marketing. Our welcome center, which is funded almost half by the city, and Visit Napa Valley is also subject to a shift in the chamber's budget and priorities should the contract not be funded. And our welcome center does serve locals. They frequently come by to pick up literature for visiting family and guests, and they, of course, come by to rent cars from Enterprise. The welcome center has served as the Willcall Center for the Film Festival, the kitchens in the vineyards, and many other events that are enjoyed by visitors and locals alike. Nonprofits use the welcome center to promote their events as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Elaine Demann, 1113 Childs Avenue. I'm glad that the expenditure of close to a quarter of a million dollars was moved off the consent calendar, so that at least there is some room for negotiation. In terms of the amount of the request itself, here are some of my concerns, and I believe they should be your concerns as well. Lack of transparency. I'm astonished by the lack of transparency in the chamber's report and the information it has not revealed to the city, particularly in light of the size of this request. Who, for example, are the 336 members who will be the beneficiary of this enormous gift? How much do chamber members actually pay in dues? I ask this because there is considerable shortfall between what should be collected by the chamber as dues, based on its membership numbers at the different levels, and what the chamber has reported as revenue from dues. So it seems as though the city is being asked to subsidize the marketing of unknown businesses that, for whatever reason, do not pay their fair share of the dues in cash to the chamber. And since we don't know who these businesses are, we don't know if they even contribute to the city's tax base. Does the city actually receive TOT from 18 lodging establishments that are members of the chamber but not necessarily within city limits? Does the city receive tax and business license revenue from 75 wineries? The scope of work offered by the chamber does not answer these questions, and I believe that you, stewards of that money, should be getting answers to these questions before doling out close to a quarter of a million dollars in public money. Are we getting our money's worth? According to the staff report, tourism provides a significant revenue stream, but it also has its costs, both to quality of life and impacts on infrastructure, which are not included in either the staff report or the chamber's report. But even with the information we do have, you need to ask, does the tourism revenue stream we currently enjoy depend on giving nearly a quarter of a million dollars to the Chamber of Commerce? I Googled Napa Valley, and what appeared at the top of the list are napavalley.com and visitnapavalley.com, respectively. Each of these sites have links that direct the viewer to individual cities in the valley, including Saint Helena and the business establishments within its boundaries. And visitors to those websites also have opportunities to book lodging at six establishments within the city limits. The two websites on top are followed by Wikipedia, TripAdvisor, Both A State Park, the Vintners Association, the Wine Train, and Bottle Rock, in that order. If you Google "Saint Helena," the chamber site does appear first, but my guess is that anyone Googling "Saint Helena" has already decided to visit and can get most, if not all, of the information they need from TripAdvisor, which appears second on the list and is, to many visitors, a more valuable source of information and costs us nothing. Third on the list is the city of Saint Helena, which indicates that a portal to the city's website through the chamber's website is superfluous. It is not difficult to find or navigate the city of Saint Helena's website, and they have been pretty good about keeping us informed of city government events, as has the Sheriff's Department during emergency situations. Can I continue?
Just, please wrap up, yes.
So the answer to the question, "Are we getting our money's worth?" is no. Saint Helena is not dependent on giving $221,000 to the chamber to continue enjoying a tourist revenue stream or to ease communication between the city and its residents. Community programming. During its presentation to the city council, the chamber let us know in no uncertain terms that if the contract was not renewed, it would not cut into its marketing budget because it was too important, but it would eliminate the welcome center and funding for community events. The chamber's total funding of community events, according to its scope of work, is $53,200.
Can you please finish up?
The chamber's total funding, let's say I already did that part. $8,000 of that comes from the city, specifically for Earth Day fireworks, the Hometown Harvest Festival, which I presume is also a revenue source for the chamber, and various unidentified city promotions. It would be, am I wrong on that? Okay. It would be interesting to see, well, if there'd been a more thorough.
Please face that, please.
Okay. It would be interesting to see how each of these supposedly local-serving events would be played through the budget process. If it was, residents would consider if they use and want to fund a welcome center to the tune of $100,000. In any case, the city, which I understand is still in dire financial straits, could save itself a lot of money by adding $53,000 to the budget of the Recreation Department to cover the chamber's contribution, plus its own, and still maintain those community events that serve the residents. What else could we be doing with close to a quarter of a million dollars? Perhaps we could see restoration of the library's hours, or improved maintenance of our public parks and recreation areas. Perhaps we could put in the pedestrian crossing the residents of Woodbridge have been asking for for years, so they can safely cross Hunt Avenue to get to a sidewalk. Perhaps it could go towards establishing a fee lot for stretch limousines and tour buses, so they stop parking in residential areas. The money saved could even be put into a rainy day fund, which, according to the city's staff report, is a major shortcoming of the city's financial situation, and is necessary to respond to unbudgeted emergencies. Clearly, there are a lot of ways to spend $221,000 in a more beneficial, transparent, and locally-serving way than by renewing this contract. I know you had some difficult decisions to make when putting together this year's budget, and you were not able to meet many of the legitimate requests put forth by various members of the city's staff, but based on the lack of transparency, the questionable value of this investment, and other more pressing needs of the city, I hope you will vote no to renewing this contract in its present form. It's the only financially prudent thing to do. Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment?
Yes, please.
Try to keep it to three minutes.
I will definitely do three minutes. Now I get where the quarter of a million, a million dollars was, where it's 210, right? Not 221 that we're asking for? Like, we're not, okay. Because I was like, oh, we just increased it. But I am a resident in Saint Helena, 1403 Vineyard. I live here, work here, play here. My kids are here, too. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss again our contract for marketing services. In the interest of the time, I'm not going to repeat our metrics, accomplishments, number of plans for the future unless you have questions. I want to point out what this contract is about. Marketing money is dedicated to promoting our city, our community, and our businesses. This contract provides a service that is effective, accomplished, and consistent. All the necessary requirements to promote the town for our visitors. Our programs and the way we have spent the money is consistent with the scope of work in the contract, which explicitly calls for us to operate a welcome center, keep a robust website, and create and implement programs to promote visitors through marketing and PR. We have met those goals with successful results. This contract is not a contribution to a nonprofit. While we are proud of our efforts to help build our community, we are marketing arms that generates revenue for the city. Our public relations ad value represents an industry standard metric that businesses use every day to measure marketing success. Small businesses and Fortune 500 companies subscribe to this standard and is credible. This ad value alone is over $800,000 for a $30,000 investment in PR, and that is just the PR results. The promotions we do for lodging, restaurants, shops, and wineries also show returns. Sale tax and ADR are up, meaning people are spending more money, and occupancy is steady and rising, again, showing that people are staying longer. The council has received positive letters from businesses who say they benefit. This is not, there is not one opposition letter from a marketing professional who questions our industry, accepted metrics, and benchmarks. In fact, we include them in our marketing committee to measure in real time. As the Chair of the Chamber for the past year, I spent many hours meeting with other businesses, owners, property owners, working on committees, and with staff. It has been a huge investment of time, and I feel well worth it to understand better the community where I live. I've had the privilege, because I am fortunate to work for a business, that allows me to volunteer for this organization. As someone who's owned a small business for 10 years, I know what it's like to not have the time to give. We know that small business owners play many roles. They open the stores, deal with personnel, buy, sell, and keep their books. To be actually involved in outside activities and organizations is tough. At the chamber, we welcome anyone who can donate their time and effort to the organization, but at the same time, do our best to understand and respect small business owners' time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Garro, I'm a member of the Chamber Board of Directors. We here and acknowledge the concerns of the community regarding traffic, impacts on housing, and we're working on ways to lessen those. Part of that is through our commitment to managing tourism. Quality versus quantity. We're not trying to drive the tourists here year-round. We're trying to put the right guests in the right place. We have a new general plan, a 2010 economic study, a 2014 economic vitality report, and a 2016 ad hoc revenue source task force that all believed in a long-range economic development strategy. However, the city still has no developed plan. In the meantime, marketing must and should continue. Our motto has been, "When businesses thrive, the community thrives." Without marketing, the ripple effect can have a negative impact on the financial success of our businesses, which in turn could cause a reduction in donations and support of our nonprofits and our community. Regardless of how anyone feels about the chamber, our advocacy efforts, or any of us personally, it is undeniable that our work product is excellent, our metrics are successful by industry standards, and effective in their accomplishments. This is how the contract should be decided, as the only effective, efficient, and successful economic development tool for generating revenue for the city. To reduce or eliminate the only line item in the budget that promotes our city is shortsighted. We remain available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning. Pam Simpson, Saint Helena Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. One of the reasons that napavalley.com and Visit Napa Valley is at the top is obviously because they have Napa Valley in their name, but we actually, as part of our marketing budget, pay to be part of Visit Napa Valley and napavalley.com. So the reason that our Saint Helena page has come up on napavalley.com is because we pay. That's part of the marketing strategy, and Saint Helena would not have come up in that search if we weren't paying napavalley.com. It's part of the overall marketing strategy. The other thing is, is that $210,000 is not going to get you a whole lot from a marketing firm. We know this because the city of Napa actually uses their destination marketing money to pay a marketing firm. And they pay Augustine over in Sacramento, and they pay well over $500,000. And they don't get near the community involvement that we do here in Saint Helena. One of the reasons that the local, Calistoga, Yountville, and American Canyon all chose to use their chambers is because we do have a respect for the locals, we have a respect for what happens within our community. You hand that off to a marketing firm somewhere in Sacramento or San Francisco, they're just not going to have the connection. And so that's one of the big reasons why the local, smaller towns have all chosen to go with their Chamber of Commerce. Plus, we also have the respect and the investment from the Saint Helena Tourist Improvement District to combine those funds, the 210, with another $76,000 from the TID, just boosts our money. The local TID, I doubt, would go with a marketing firm for any reason, because they truly feel that the chamber's the best way to make sure that our businesses are being represented. We're here to answer any questions. We want to be as transparent as possible. Like I said, we did bring the list of our members. There are 336 strong, and we will do better at making sure everybody knows who they are. We're proud of our work. We're proud of the investment that the city made, and we're here to answer. here to answer any questions. We know there's been concern, so we would like to be able to clarify if anything comes up in discussion, if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? All right, I'll close the public comment and invite council discussion. Let me begin with Mr. White.
Well, I think you all know how I feel about investment in the chamber. I think we're looking at over 50% or maybe even 60% of our revenue comes from our businesses, our hotels, and to just shut off their, I mean, our investment in them, I think, is imprudent, and I think what I've seen over the last two years, even during the time that we had problems with, well, I mean, we had the widening, Caltrans doing all the roadwork, and I think without the chamber's help and our investment in that, our businesses really would have suffered a lot more than they did. And the next two years, we've got another Caltrans project coming to the valley, where they're going to start resurfacing the Highway 29 all the way from north Napa all the way to Me Lane, and it's going to take a real effort from the city and from the chamber to let everybody know that there is St. Helena, which is north of the next new traffic jam. And since our revenues for the city are so closely tied to the chamber's efforts, the businesses' efforts, the hotels, I think it would just be unfortunate if we cut that contract out and lost that marketing ability. I agree that sometime when we can afford to do it, we need to have our own economic development department in the city, but right now, I don't see that that's not funded for this next year's budget, and at least this is a little token to help us and our businesses out through the next year. So, that's how I feel about it.
All right, Ms. Cobenstein?
Yeah, I want to clarify something. In questioning what we're doing with this contract, I'm not anti-chamber. I think your materials are excellent, I appreciate what you do. I'm not anti-business. What I want is another line item in the budget, money saved, that does start us working on an economic development strategy, particularly for downtown. Not hiring another staff person, but to start to understand what is going on downtown, why we have spaces that we cannot fill, what we can do in terms of our zoning, or fast-tracking, or something, to bring businesses here that complement what we have and strengthen our business and service sector downtown. I think it's time to do this. Hopefully, we're going to adopt a general plan, we're going to go right into looking at the zoning districts, and it would behoove us to understand what we can do with our central business district and our service commercial district, and what we could do with a mixed-use district. This chamber contract, it's 95% destination marketing, 5% community programming. I think the community programming is great. In fact, I wish there was more of it. It does cost money, it also brings in a little money. I was a little bit bewildered by the numbers we had. I went to the 990 of the chamber from last year, and the community programming brought in roughly $33,000. So, the net cost of it was 20. It's the destination piece and the fact that basically the public sector is being asked to totally support it, that's what bothers me. I think that there is money to fill in what I would like to take out. And let's talk a little bit about the tourists here. I did spend a lot of time looking at the recent Napa Valley tourist visitor profile. Wineries and restaurants are the primary beneficiaries of destination marketing. In fact, in this little book of big experiences, it's 95% wineries and restaurants, one page on our retail business downtown. Who comes here? Two-thirds of the people who come to Napa Valley, according to this report, are day trippers. Some of them live in the San Francisco region, some of them come from further away. Only 35% of them come here and spend the night. And what do those day trippers do? Their top activity is to go taste wine at wineries. I'm not saying you shouldn't do that, everybody loves to do it, but they're going to, between two and a half and three wineries a day, on a day, and then how many of them trickle into downtown and benefit our businesses? I question it. And when you look at what they spend per travel party, when you look at all of them, on clothing, jewelry, and other retail combined, they spend $57.60 a day. That's not a lot of sales tax. When you look at the day trippers, they spend $36.09 per day. So, I think what we need to do, we have plenty of people who want to come here, go to wineries, go to restaurants, and I don't blame them, but I think we need to help our local business. You know, this year's destination marketing budget that we have here is very similar to what we had last year, and we got some information spreadsheet of what the actuals was last year and what the budget was last year. And to try to make sense of it again, I looked at this 990. What was reported as being spent on advertising and promotion was $84,755. Events, 31.5. Website, 28. I think of all those things as legitimate chamber activities, and I wouldn't want to take money away from them. But that's, you know, we're getting to about $140,000, $150,000. The welcome center, the occupancy costs, the insurance, it's about $54,000. What this also shows is that last year, the bottom line, the chamber had, at the end of the day, $61,949 left over. Seems to me there's $60,000 in here that we could dedicate to our small businesses. There's dues reported of 268, roughly, sponsorship income of almost $24,000, program revenue, $33,000, and other revenue of $35,000. That's about $350,000 of revenue. Surely, we can take $60,000 and put it in our own budget to help our own businesses downtown and get that brown paper off the windows and get something happening.
Mr. Elsberg?
Yeah, so, whatever happens today here with this, you know, I'm planning to be here for a while in this town, so this is going to be an ongoing discussion. Pardon?
God willing.
I was going to say that, but yeah, but I'm planning on it. So, some of the questions that have come up, and I appreciate the chamber, too. I think we're lucky to have the chamber, but as I said in the CIA discussion, the CIA is lucky to be here, too. We're all lucky to be here. So, working together, talking, is how this is going to, how I believe we're going to get where we're trying to go. But I have some points. Questions are asked about what are the actual expenses, people wanting to see receipts on the marketing, what are the, where are the receipts? People have asked, is the money being spent to do things like the P-Bid consulting work? So, if we can see what the money's going to. There's a question about the chamber membership. If the chamber membership is both in the city and in the county, are we actually promoting the competition? Does that make sense? One of the things we're having problems with, I believe in the whole county and regionally, is we're seeing all these approvals happening that sort of compete with each other. One of the original principles of the Ag Preserve was that we don't approve too much commercial use in the growing agricultural areas, so that the tourism goes to the cities. But if we're promoting both the county and the city, are we promoting both at once, in a sense like supplying the, what is it, the Hutus and the Tutsis at the same time? So, I think we have to ask, who are the, where is the membership? And how is it, are we promoting the competition at the same time? The problem is, not that, not that I don't want people to prosper or succeed, but we have limitations in Napa County. We have two two-lane roads that feed the whole up valley, so we have to share, somehow share that, those veins of supply, supplying tourists or supplying supplies or workers. So, if we overbuild, if we overcommit on both the city and the county, and Calistoga, it's like an arms race, and it just keeps growing. And I have a little comment on the rising tide floats all boats. We happen to be in a very small marina, and if that tide comes up and we keep adding more boats, and big boats, some of the little boats are going to have trouble, because the big new boats are going to push on top of them. So, it's a more complicated analogy than just a rising tide. We're in a really complex situation here. So, impacts, I want to see more discussion of impacts. There are projects that have been lobbied in the past by the chamber that have really pushed commercial encroachment into the residential areas, things like the short-term rentals and the changes to the small winery ordinance. It pushes for a commercial use in a residential area or around our residential areas, which use our roads, our common roads, as now a commercial throughway. So, I think that those sorts of things have to be addressed. The chamber has said that they want the general plan to be more tourism-friendly, and yet we see a hotel that has a parking situation that is actually resident-hostile. It is causing damage. So, I would like to see the chamber help corral that situation. The other, another thing that's come up is this wastewater thing, where we have a lot of small businesses that have been really impacted by this, and only one member from the chamber has gotten in touch with me and talked a little bit about it, and I appreciate it. But I think if we're talking about protecting small businesses, let's all talk about that and all the businesses. I think I'm just about done. I have one more thing. If, and I heard recently that the streets are dead, there are not enough tourists, but isn't that, in a sense, something of an indictment of the current program? If we're not doing it, something's not working correctly if the streets aren't busy this year, and we funded this last year. So, I think we have to have an ongoing discussion about what we're doing and how we interact with the county, because if we're promoting the county at the same time as the city, where are we going? So, that's where I'm at at this point.
All right. Mr. Dory?
You know, I think, Jeff, you raised an important issue in terms of a sort of a misalignment with some of the advocacy by the chamber and our residents' core values, and I think that's something that bothers me and has bothered me for a number of years, and it's something that we definitely need to explore further. The chamber wears many hats and has different sort of groups in one, and part of it is advocacy and part of it is managing the destination marketing, and sometimes they get intertwined, and it's difficult. I know there have been a number of projects that you mentioned, that the chamber has really taken a sort of a take-no-prisoners advocacy stance, and I think it has led to a little bit of consternation in the community, and it's there. We have to grapple with it. Residents aren't happy with the chamber in many regards. But I, and we have to deal with that. That's not going to happen overnight. That's a matter of a culture shift and a recognition of what are our values, what are our community values, and how do we get residents and protection of neighborhoods and those kinds of values aligned with the chamber's values? That's a work in progress, I think, and I'm committed to doing that, and I think the chamber should be committed to doing that, in developing their own policies. I would like to actually see policies by the chamber on managed tourism and quality of life and those kinds of things. But that's going to take a fair amount of time to get there. So, I hear what you're saying, and I, to a great extent, I agree with it. For me, you know, I've been a over-20-year member of the Chamber of Commerce in Calistoga. I understand how chambers and visitors' operations work. I was served on the board of directors in the Chamber of Commerce in Calistoga. I have, not necessarily an insider's view, but I have a deeper respect and maybe a greater perspective in terms of the necessity of Chamber of Commerce work. For me, it would be imprudent and really short-sighted not to focus in on the things that the chamber does do for our community. I think a visitor, a tourist community has to have a welcome center. That's just pretty basic. It's a welcome center. Now, we can talk about how those costs are allocated, that's a, you know, deeper issue, but I think fundamentally, we have to have a welcome center to take care of people when they come to our town. That's what we, we are out there as a tourist community, and to just say, "We're not going to have a welcome center," no, that doesn't make any sense to me. We should have some basic marketing, so that people appreciate and understand St. Helena more than they do. I think every, you know, the notion about metrics and marketing, it's very difficult. You know, I occasionally put ads in the paper, and I don't expect any big outcome from it, but I do like to let people know that I'm still alive, you know, and kicking, just in case. So, you're never going to get the exact metrics, but you're, you know, the notion of a tourist community not having a basic visitors' welcome center, to me, is unfathomable. So, I'm more focused on those basic things, a little bit of marketing, a welcome center, some of the handouts that they have. And then I think others in the community have raised the issue about the community programming, and I think we could beef that up, frankly. We can beef that up, and, you know, I'm spoiled, because, you know, folks in the audience know about this, you know, I think Harvest Table, the Tractor Parade, those kinds of things in Calistoga are wonderful, not only for visitors, but for residents. And so, the focus on programming that actually encourages and is available for both residents and visitors, that's successful, and I think we can do more there. One of the things I'm troubled by, and I don't think it's meant to be intentional, but sort of the notion that, well, if the contract is rearranged, or shifted, or monies, or even defunded altogether, that we're going to shift. Well, it's a contract. This is a negotiation. This is, you know, you can threaten to shift the monies elsewhere, but we have to do a deal here that makes sense for our businesses and our residents. So, I would like to see greater emphasis, maybe another $30,000 shifted from this 210 to programming, some initiative, either beef up these smaller programming projects or take on another initiative. That would be something to look at in the contract, for sure. I'd like to see, out of all the money that the chamber members themselves give to the chamber, only $55,000 of it is for destination marketing. It seems a little low. It seems a little low to me, you know. So, in general, I'm very favorable to the $210,000, because I think it's necessary in these times. Calistoga City Government gives $343,000 to its destination marketing visitor center program. Yountville gives $250,000. Now, granted, they have other sources that add to that. So, I don't think we're out of line or out of step with best practices. We're right in line with best practice. There's nothing that we're doing that's so out of whack that we should be embarrassed by it or somehow dismayed by it. I think it's a natural part of what a tourist economy does. So, those are just my general thoughts. I'd like to see the chamber sort of reallocate some of the money, and it's interesting, over the budgets, you know, from last year to this year, the allocations are all over the map, and I don't know what the thinking was. You know, the monies are shifted so many times, it would be nice to have a consistent, this is what we expect from the chamber. So, like others, I think that there needs to be more money shifted to programming. And then the economic development issue, there's a lot of things going on there. I don't know if we want to get into, in response to your point, Councilmember Cobenstein. I think that the city does need to look at its codes and look at economic development, but I think that should be separate and apart from this destination marketing contract. However, there is a need for it, and there are stores that are closed, there are, you know, we need to take a serious look at that. I'm not sure if that... I'm not sure if that gets folded in here or if that's new money somewhere else. Not sure. I mean, you were saying reallocate the money. I'm not quite with you on that, on reallocating the money for that purpose. And I also think there is some truth to the fact that, because I hear this all the time, there are a lot of disgruntled chamber members, you know? Some folks don't feel like they're getting their due, you know? And I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce in Calistoga, and I don't see them promoting lawyers anywhere. So I understand that. Or my law office or anything like that, so, you know? But that seems like an internal issue to a certain extent. Maybe our government or the city can get involved in that. But that seems like an internal, sort of a power struggle between wineries, restaurants, and lodging, and then retail maybe feeling a little disgruntled. And I don't know if I want to get myself inserted into that hornet's nest. I think that the retail folks are going to have to start getting on the board and start making better decisions or be more influential in terms of how chamber monies are used. I don't know if the government should be involved in getting into that level of micromanaging how the chamber operates.
Yeah.
I'll stop there, but those are my general thoughts.
All right. Well, certainly, I support the chamber contract. In response to Mr. White, not necessarily in response to it, but sales tax and TOT tax really constitute about 55% of our general revenue budget next year, which is, it's growing. It needs to grow. To me, we're not in a static environment. Sadly, in this county, the towns do compete one another. We're faced with very large projects in Calistoga. Napa is proposing to add a very large number of hotel rooms. We just can't stay still. We need to promote our businesses here, especially our hotels here. And I agree with Mr. Doring. We have to operate, make sure that we have a visitor center that's well-operated. And so while I have more to say, I think the basic issues have been covered at this point. Is there any further council discussion?
I have one more comment.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'm not against giving the chamber some support, but I think the idea of talking about, you know, reallocation, two items were the parking lot south of Sunshine and the bus, the Ryanda we talked about with Ryanda that would go up to the hospital, that five months ago, the chamber and the city had started these talks, and it's gone nowhere. And so if, what I was a little bit disturbed with was when, at the last meeting, it was sort of that we'll take our ball and go home attitude. If you don't do this for us, we're going to take away all these community service things, and that's what we're going to do. And I think that we need to have a longer, deeper conversation about what we're doing here. And for me, things like this parking lot that would serve everybody, that's something that, I think it's $3,000 a month, so that's $36,000 a year to do that. So maybe that's something that that's where a reallocation can go. Or the Ryanda bus that goes to the hospital. Those are just a couple ideas. I'm not against giving support to the chamber, but I think it has to be in balance with what we're trying to do here.
All right. What's before us today is whether to approve or not approve the chamber contract. So at this point, the chair would invite a motion to approve the chamber contract.
Well, I hope that, before you make the motion, I hope that our concerns are addressed, otherwise the motion's probably not going to get very far. I don't want my, I just laid out a couple of things, in particular, reallocation, destination marketing, and a slight reallocation of the community programming. I hope that a motion would at least include some kind of discussion, maybe at the staff level, to work on that. That would, just straight out, that's what I need to have happen in order for me to support the chamber contract.
Then why don't you make that motion?
I'm also, there are other folks, I mean, I think you're kind of bypassing a lot of issues in yes or no, and I don't think, it's an area of gray again, not black and white, yes or no.
Let me tell you what my thinking is, which is to see whether the votes are there to approve the chamber contract. If they're not there to approve the chamber contract, then when we get to the budget discussion, there would need to be a motion or a direction to staff to renegotiate the chamber contract with whatever the majority says should be renegotiated. I don't see us here at the city council level undertaking to renegotiate the contract today. What would happen is there would be direction to staff to see whether it can be renegotiated with the chamber.
Well, that doesn't make any sense to me. You know, being a lawyer and two other lawyers on this council that if you approve the contract, you approve the contract. I think we need to take those consider, in whatever way the motion is brought forward, we need to give direction that on at least a couple of these issues, there should be a renegotiation of a contract that can be approved at some point.
I would agree. I would move that we table this until our June 13 meeting, and in the meantime, that the staff and the chamber work together along some of the lines that Councilmember Doring has suggested, to beef up the community programming, support some of the destination marketing with other revenues. That's my motion.
I would suggest, I would suggest that we, if we agree on the $210,000, and then we give, or we give staff direction to renegotiate the contract and bring the contract back to us amended and something that we can all agree on, but I think the $210,000, I mean, that's my feeling.
Well, point of order. I made a motion and it was seconded. And I think the reason I wanted to do this after the budget was so that if we knew that the 210 was an appropriate number, and miraculously, this gets put on consent before we get to the budget. I'd like to leave the number without sticking it right now and ask the chamber to come back and work with our staff and bring us something that we can vote on in terms of a contract. It may be 210. When we finish today, maybe it'll be something else.
Well, at this point, Ms. Black, we have a motion, and I invited a motion to approve the contract. Did Mr. White some move?
Two motions now on the table.
There are two motions on the table.
I don't think his motion was seconded.
Well, I certainly would second it. But again, with the idea that, well, there seems to be some concurrence, that we would ask staff to go back and talk further with the chamber in terms of the allocation issues that have come up. That seems necessary in order to get a majority of the council to approve the contract.
I'm not willing to approve a contract till we know where the money is going. You approve a contract, you've approved a contract.
Well, I think what Mr. White was saying was we're approving an amount, not the contract itself. We're approving the amount and then we're...
And giving direction to staff to come back with a renegotiated contract, hearing what we said today. So, and then we would have to approve that contract. But we're approving the $210,000 is what my motion is.
Yeah, again, I think we may end up at 210. I'd like to see where we end up with everything else before we vote on 210.
Well, I guess what I would ask is, given the fact that Mr. White's made a motion, it's been seconded, at this point, I think we should have a roll call on that and see whether that works. If it doesn't, then we'll move the discussion. Ms. Black?
Can I just have you repeat your motion one more time?
Okay, my motion is to approve the $210,000, ask the staff to come back with an amended contract that takes into consideration the council discussion that we had today.
All right. Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth?
No.
Cobenstein?
No.
All right. Good. That then moves us to 5.1, which is Report on Development Impact Fees.
Thank you. This is an informational item that stemmed from the first budget hearing that we had. Councilmember Cobenstein asked for some additional information regarding our development impact fees and how they are collected. A little bit of background is cities and counties often do charge fees on new development to fund public improvements, and what this does is this mitigates the impact on developmental activity. The discussion that we have is impact fees are imposed by the City of St. Helena on new or proposed development project to pay for all or a portion of the costs of providing public services to the new development. Currently, right now, the city does collect eight different types of development impact fees, ranging from public safety, civic improvement, park improvement, traffic mitigation, storm grain, housing impact or affordable housing impact fees, water impact fees and sewer impact fees. Similar to our water and wastewater rate study, approximately every three to five years, the city does conduct a study to analyze the impacts of development on the city's capital facilities needs and to calculate development impact fees based on that analysis. The city, similar to the water and wastewater fees, we cannot just arbitrarily assign a dollar amount that the new development must pay for certain activities. There has to be a nexus provided and a justification for why we're charging certain impact fees and how much of those impact fees can be used towards these new development and new projects. Government Code Section 66001, part of the study, this section must make, the study must make findings to, one, identify the purpose of the fee, two, to identify the use of the fee, and then, three, to determine that there's a reasonable relationship between the use of the fee and the development type on which it's imposed, the need for the facility and the type of development on which the fee is imposed, and lastly, the amount of the fee and the facility cost attributed to the development process or project. All new development in a community, all new development within a community creates additional demands on some or all the public facilities provided by local government. For instance, you have a new building, let's, for instance, Los Alcubis, they come online. It has greater demand on the city with the streets, with the public safety, so there's certain impacts that that type of development's going to have on the city. The following sections review each of the impact fee accounts. I just want to do a high-level overview. As one of the attachments in the staff report, it is the entire development impact fee study. And as you recall, about two years ago, we did discover that there was an error in one of the calculations by the Colgan Report, and that had specifically to do with the water impact fees. We did make that correction and did refund. It was, I think, about $150,000 worth of impact fees that we erroneously collected. So the next section briefly goes over all eight of those different type of impact fees that we collect, as well as what the current balance is on the account. I'm just going to review public safety. I don't want to have to go into detail for every single one of the impact fees, but public safety is an easy one to follow, so you can kind of see how much money the city has and what its available uses are. So for the public safety impact fee, 216, that is our actual fund number, so that's where any money collected on behalf of public safety impact fees, it gets put right into that fund. When you look at the CAFRA report or audited financials, governmental activities, all impact fees get put into that governmental activities. Call them, so just so you know, about half of what's listed in the CAFRA is governmental activities, is actually restricted for certain things like the impact fees. So currently, the public safety impact of fee account, the balance as of 515 is $385,000. Thank you, Noah.
Thank you very much.
On the next page, you'll see the improvement description. So these are approved improvements. So these improvements were taken into consideration when we did the last impact fee study by Joe Colgan. You'll see the approximate development impact, or the approximate improvement costs. So a police station remodel, 552, fire station site, little over a million, fire station, 5.5 million. I honestly don't know how the police department got the short end of the stick, but the fire department looks like they get a little bit of everything here. You'll see the improvement costs. Next to it, you'll see the new development share. So of a police station remodel, only 11.6% of it can be attributed to new development. Another way of saying that is, the police station that we currently have, they need some remodeling done. New development is not responsible for all of that remodel. They're only responsible for a very small portion of it, and that would be attributed to how much additional infrastructure is needed because of new development. Public safety is pretty easy across the board, it's 11.6%. The new development costs, so out of the improvement costs of the $552,000, new development is only responsible for paying $65,000 of that. The amount needed from other funds is the $488,000. So this, if you look at all of our different impact fee accounts, that is a real hindrance to the city right now of why we cannot spend some of this money. The money is put into this account, it has to be reserved for these specific improvements. We are only allowed to use a certain percentage of the cost of the improvement. We're only allowed to use that certain percentage from impact fees. So basically, the general fund or other monies has to pay for the other costs.
Can I ask you a question, White? It's right here on this subject.
Absolutely.
Can we allocate all the money that's available to one project that's listed in, under this? So we don't have, there's not a percentage of each one that we have to give to? We can do just one project, right?
That is correct. And we just, the most important thing is we have to just keep to that percentage base. So you'll see within some of the other civic improvements and the, you know, the street improvements, there's some where they're saying new development is 0%, there's some where saying new development is 100%. So we really need to look at the percentages. A question did come up whether these are, these percentages seem somewhat low. If compared to other larger cities that do have a lot of development, yes, these would seem low. Because of the size of St. Helena and because of our limitation on new development, new development share is only a very, very small portion of this. So this is something that we review on a regular basis. We are currently under contract with Wildin Financial Services right now, so they, we are working on a new development impact fee study. Once that development impact fee study is done, they will actually look at new projects. So it's not saying that, let's say we don't do a police station remodel because eventually down the line, we're looking at doing a new civic center. Those costs, it doesn't mean that they're allocated just for that. When Wildin finishes their new analysis, we'll probably have a new grouping of projects and then probably a pretty similar percentage that we can now spend that money on, but we're pretty much limited to what was actually put in the study.
So to further question on Councilmember Doring's question, let's just take the police building remodel as an example. If we have...
385.
Three, wow, never mind, no.
We don't have much.
I mean, if that was the decision to make, that we were going to remodel the police station, could we use that entire 385 just on that one project?
We, yes, we could. However, the city would need to come up with the other 89% out of some other fund balance. So that entire dollar amount, we could allocate it, but that can only be attributed to 11.6%.
To that one project.
So another fund would have to basically cover the other 89% of the cost. So let's say if the total cost is, let's do easy math, $10,000 to remodel, let's say if it's $10,000, you can only take $1,100 from this development impact fee. The other money has to come from someplace else.
That's what I think we were both getting at. Okay. And how soon, yeah, right. So, let's see, what else was I going to ask? Oh, how soon are we going to get the next study done?
We have been working on it for about a year and a half now, but because of other projects that have come our way, it's been put on the back burner. We have been working with them on development impact fee study, a cost allocation plan, as well as a user fee study. So we're doing all three of them, which is pretty substantial, takes a lot of staff time. The only thing we have completed at this point is this cost allocation plan. Our Public Works Director, Erica, is working with them on the development impact fees, and then I am working with them on the user fees.
Okay.
So we're, I would love to say within six months, but the way projects have been coming up, it's been very difficult.
Six months to a year.
Exactly. That would be, the sooner the better. I would rather have this in place as well as the user fees.
Sounds like a prison sentence.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was not just looking at the impact accounts, I was looking at other funds, and I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear, but we have another fund called Traffic Mitigation, which I think has a fair amount of money in it. And my specific question was going to the fact that we had a radar sign in the budget at like $17,500, and I was wondering if that was an item that can be paid out of that fund.
I would have to look into that further. I'd have to research that.
Isn't Traffic Mitigation one of our impact funds here?
Well, there's, yeah.
Two million dollars in it, over $2 million.
When you look at, maybe I'm wrong, when I looked at the CAFRA, I thought there was a separate fund.
No, that is, it's at the very last section of the CAFRA where it has other funds. It would have had Traffic Mitigation. Unfortunately, the way the CAFRA presents it, it just has the title only, it doesn't have the fund number. I like to put both of them together, it's a little easier to understand. But yes, and the radar sign is definitely not in this list. Thank you very much. And apparently, we're done with this item. And this is a receive and file report, it was an informational item for the council.
All right. Are there any other questions from council? Let me open it up to the public hearing. Does anybody wish to comment at public hearing on this? Yes, please.
Lois Batuello, 1634 Main Street. I know you've done a lot of work with the police department for all of the remodel and upgrades. Personally, I think they really need a whole new station, and you can get one at a cost of $62,000 a year. Okay? And later on, I want to comment on how you can find that kind of money very easily. If they're not uncomfortable with being at 1272 Railroad Avenue where they have a million-dollar view from a second-story window and a great conference room, that would be an excellent location for them, an idea I wanted to throw out. But, think about maintenance and all of the repairs that you're doing against the idea that you have lots of money that will be identified later to fund the development of a whole new station. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further public comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Any further council discussion at all? Then the only action is just to receive and file, which is done. All right. So, then that takes us to item 5.2, that's our budget workshop, to review the three options that have been presented by staff here. Ms. Mitz?
Just waiting for my PowerPoint, my trusty old PowerPoint to come up. I promise I can see it on Cindy's, there we go. So, the meeting today is following our May 2nd council direction. So, the council direction that we had for May 2nd was to fund the nonprofits and then also research of affordable housing trust funds, would be appropriate use for the $10,000 grant requested by our town, St. Helena. For that particular item, we did consult with our attorneys, and they do believe that yes, that would be an allowable expense to use affordable housing trust funds to fund that $10,000. So, in the three scenarios that we are presenting today, options 1, 2, and 3, we are fully funding all of the nonprofits. Obviously, that's up for council, council direction, if they'd like to continue along those, that route, or if they like to maybe make a determination to a lesser dollar amount. For the full funding of the nonprofits, the $10,000 from our town, St. Helena, is being taken from affordable housing, and then the other $100,600 is from general fund. The additional direction was to transfer $800,000 from the general fund to Water CIP Fund to go towards the removal of Upper York Creek Dam, to reduce departmental expenses to offset the use of general fund for Upper York Creek Dam removal, to characterize the use of Measure D funds, to provide an overview of impact fee accounts and allowable uses, which is what the last staff report was, and then to also provide an overview of year-over-year expenses for the budget. And what we did, and you'll see later on in the presentation, we just took the large, the large categories, we didn't characterize some of the smaller ones, but we definitely did characterization of the larger ones. Some updates since May 2nd that have taken place. On May 22nd, the city council did direct staff to create a subsidy to certain business classifications for water sewer rates, and this is at a cap of $75,000 from the general fund. So, we did take this into consideration in this, in this budget. Does not make me miss high school at all. On May 25th, the city did receive quotes to change our phone system to a voice-over IP system. We were initially hoping that it would be cost-neutral because of the savings that we will have from this much-needed upgrade to the system. Will actually lower our monthly, our monthly phone bills. We were hoping it was going to be cost-neutral, but in the leasing of the equipment, it was actually a little more expensive. So, we did add an additional cost of $40,000, a little over $40,000 to this budget. However, 50% of those costs are offset by a decrease in the monthly communications bills. In addition, on May 26, we updated our revenue projections, and this was based on actual general fund revenues received to date. Again, excuse me, the amounts that we put in there for property sales and transient occupancy, they are our best estimates based off of historically what have happened, what has happened, and then we provide just a percentage increase from year to year or decrease based on what other people in the industry are doing. So, we did have some positive revenue projections, in particular, when it comes to property taxes, so we were able to do that and update those accordingly. Additionally, I did, Councilmember Coverstein sent me an email on Friday, and I appreciated it, where I did have an error in two of my charts that were provided at the initial May 2nd budget hearing, so I did make corrections to those, and it was in the property sales tax and TOT charts. So, here's the update since May 2nd. So, our general fund revenues for property taxes, we are now estimating that our 1617 estimated year-end will be $3.6 million. Our 1718 proposed is $3.6 million, so right around the same. We did put in a 3% increase in property taxes, however, it is off of what the base property tax is. This year, for fiscal year 1617, we did receive an ERAF shift, which is something we don't typically, we don't depend on that revenue because it can go away at any time, but this year, we did, and we did receive about an additional $100,000 that we were not expecting.
Let me stop you here because I'm concerned about these, these charts and that they still may be erroneous. And the reason I'm concerned is they, the, starting with the 1415 actuals, you have listed here $3,303,000, and that is way below the number that's actually in the 2015 CAFR. And I think it actually starts back in the 2014 CAFR. Those are audited financial statements that show that we're over 4 million, like almost $4.2 million in property tax revenue. And so, the reason that's obviously important is that you're estimating and projecting based on prior year's revenues, and I'm concerned, is there something that you can tell us there, or is that something you need to maybe further research?
I'll have to further research it and verify it, because what I did is I ran all of our general ledgers. And property taxes is not one-line item for our revenues that comes up, there are several line items that we combine, so I will have to verify.
Yeah, our CAFR that we just got showed, at the end of last June, we had $4,112,115 in property tax. So, your projection for our budget is a half a million dollars less than what we actually collected last year. Which is, you know, significant variance.
I will look into that. I just ran the reports on Friday when I was working on this, so these were off of the numbers that are in our, there shouldn't be a discrepancy, but I'll have to look into see why there are, because I ran the numbers off of what's our Spring Brook system, which is the same numbers that our auditors use, so I'll...
You know, I apologize for not bringing this to your attention. We had a Memorial Day, and I didn't know how to contact you, we got our reports late, but I was struck by that significant difference, and it's obviously very important because it throws all of our analysis into question, I think, in my mind.
I agree. I will definitely look into that, and I'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Yeah, I saw that too, the 4.112, $4,112,000 property taxes, and then seeing the, seeing it as 3.4, it doesn't seem to connect.
You know what, sorry, a light bulb just went off in my head. For property taxes, INLU VLF, so our vehicle license registration fees, is lumped under property taxes in our CAFR. However, in our budget document, we don't lump it under property taxes, it gets put underneath miscellaneous, and that's about $600,000. So, my apologies, my light bulb just went off on that one.
What is that, INLU what?
INLU VLF. Yeah, so our vehicle license registration fees, the INLU VLF, they, on the CAFR, they lump it under property taxes. We do not for budgeting purposes. We can make that switch over if that seems like it would be less confusion.
So, that, it's the VLR?
VLF.
VLF.
Vehicle license registration.
So, that added to the, to the 16 number should equal 4112?
Yeah, my recollection, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, it was about $684,000, $674,000, someplace around, around there for the VLF. So, that would be what the difference is for the property taxes between what's reported in the CAFR and then how we present the budget. I can easily add the VLF in there for the budgeting purposes, if that makes it a little easier. Because right now, it goes another revenue.
It would be a big help if we had consistent categories and expenses. I think what you're talking about is the revenue item called licenses and permits, is that where that money is reported?
No, I believe it's under other revenue.
Other revenue, yeah. Other revenues in the CAFR are $111,000.
Okay, then it would be, without having the CAFR in front of me and the backup, I... But I can work on that and get the same consistent, because some of our categories are a little bit different than what's reported in the CAFR, and it's because of the way the CAFR has to be presented.
Yeah, for me, it would be helpful if we'd stick with the CAFR, because then we know what our actuals are, and then we know on what basis you're projecting forward. You know, and the CAFR has, I don't know, eight or nine different categories. So, I think that these licenses, they're either under licenses and permits, or they're under other revenues. But licenses and permits would also be like business licenses, is that...
Yeah. I can definitely do, I can do that, and I can make it more in line with how the CAFR reports it. And my apologies for having that brain fade. It said, also, the light bulb went off, and I remember looking at that on Friday. That's good, thank you.
Just a quick question, is VLF money general fund revenue?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It is general fund revenue, and that is one fee where we don't, because property taxes, right now, are category property taxes, I believe there's five different accounts. The only things that we project a 3% increase on is the actual property taxes and then our, so we have unsecured and we have secured property taxes. Both of those, we're doing the 3% increase, but not the INLU VLF. So, the next chart, again, the sales and use taxes, so you'll see the 1617 estimated and then the 1718 proposed, and you'll see the big jump up for this is the approximate $1.4 million we're anticipating for Measure D. Transient occupancy tax, again, $2.1 million up to $2.7 million. These numbers did not change, it was the charge for 1314, 1415, and 1516 is where I had errors. The nonprofit applications, I wanted to provide a quick overview again if there's any other council discussion on the nonprofits. So, it has the organization, the grant amount that they're actually requesting. So, you'll see the total dollar amount requested is $110,600. $100,600, $100,600 is from the general fund, and then $10,000 from the affordable housing trust funds.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes.
Is now the time?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, I think Mr. Doring at the last meeting made a really good point that some of the nonprofits really provide essential health and human services, services. So, I think, maybe not right now, but as we move forward, we start to look at how we structure grant applications, so that maybe there's some reflection of that in how grants are applied for. But I think it's a good point for a future issue, but I think it's, I think he made, Paul made, or Mr. Doring made a good point on that last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. These are the changes to all budgets, and I wanted to highlight these because these, these changes are included in all three options that we're presenting today. So, instead of repeating these every single option, I figured I'd just review them one time, and then for each of the options, the three changes are just, the changes other than these are highlighted. So, the first change is 100% funding to nonprofits for the $100,600, and I'm pretty much just looking at the general fund column. The subsidy for the water wastewater for businesses is $75,000, so that's adding another $75,000 to the budget. Human resources, remove the classification and compensation study. That was broken down between three different departments, but you'll see the general fund's impact on it is $25,000. Human resources, removed HR internship program for, again, $5,600 for the general fund. City clerk, remove boards, commissions, and committees' management software for $1,200. Finance, removed the temporary assistance at the end of the year, this was just bringing a temp in at the end of the year to help us with our end-of-the-year filing, so that was $2,000 for the general fund. Planning, we changed the purchase of the vehicle to a lease of a vehicle, so that was, I believe the original request was, I think, $30,000, $35,000. So, that actually decreases the annual cost, $23,375. I believe the lease, when we figured it out, was right around $7,000 a year, and that was for a five-year lease. City attorney, we reduced the budget by $100,000 to the general fund. Police, we removed the purchase of a vehicle of $40,000. Police department, we moved both the body camera program and the semmunitions equipment to different funds. We looked more closely at that, and then we found the semmunitions equipment is actually cops eligible, so that's $3,000 that we can move into another fund, and cops will have some available money at the end of this year, so we're able to do that. The other item is the body camera program, that is actually being paid for from a grant, and so that's coming from a separate fund, so Fund 212, so we actually took $6,500 back out of the general fund. For the police, we also removed the wireless panic button for City Hall. We did a little more research on this, and the initial quotes, we thought was going to be about $5,000. Because of, basically, from what I'm understanding, the line of sight that is needed for it to be wireless, the cost would have actually been closer to about $17,000. So, instead of adding that number to the budget, we removed the $5,000. Library department, we moved half of the cost for the broadband updates to the Tweed Fund, because it is eligible for Tweed Funds, because it is an enhancement to the library. So, we took $20,000 out of the general fund, and then we moved it over to Tweed, and then the Tweed expenditures, we're capped at the amount that we can actually spend in Tweed, so they lowered their materials budget by $20,000 just to be able to take that out of the general fund. And then government buildings, we removed the repairs to the fire station, that was $28,000, because we did find that we do have some other funds that can actually pay for the fire station, it does not have to come out of the general fund.
Those actually repairs, I thought that when we had the original budget presentation, I thought those were hoses and things like that.
No, those are just the repairs to the fire station, so that was under governmental buildings. The hoses are still in the fire department budget, I believe those were about $30,000, and then they also had radio repeaters, I think.
So, is this that carpet issue? What is this?
It's carpeting, it's windows that are leaking, they did discover since this time, and we don't have the cost estimates on it, where the antique fire truck is up in the walls, they went and did a little research up there, and it's completely dry-rotted out because of water damage. In additional, in addition to that, we do need to have a couple of the fire station bay doors repaired. The police, or Fire Department Association has agreed to pay for those to the tune of about $60,000, so they're paying for that out of their own. There's also some change in some lighting fixtures, so it's, it's pretty substantial.
I just didn't recall a specific line item of fire station repairs, but we can move on.
It was under governmental buildings, so count number 5006, it was listed in their items.
You talk about the police removed purchase of vehicle, was that the vehicle for Chief Inboden?
No, that was already approved, and he already has that vehicle, it was replacing another one of the patrol vehicles.
Okay, okay.
Well, ironically, it was in the repair shop at the last budget meeting. So, those are the changes that are included in all three options that we're presenting today. So, here's the first option, number one, and I do want to say with options 1, 2, and 3, the net position remains exactly the same because spending stays the same, so the expenses and revenues both stay the exact same, it's just what we're doing with the money in between. So, you'll see in all three options, I've, anything not highlighted are the items that we just reviewed, the items highlighted are the things that we're changing. So, in option number one, we're transferring $800,000 from the general fund to Upper York Creek Dam, so that's adding $800,000 to the, to the general fund budget. For streets, we're actually removing the entire amount of $250,000 transferred to CIP. For equipment replacement fund, we're removing the entire $100,000. And then for the, the transfer to civic CIP, so that's for just general repair and maintenance of our buildings, we remove the $200,000. So, by increasing the budget $800,000, plus the nonprofits, plus the subsidy for the water, for the businesses for water wastewater, taking those additional items, subtracting out everything that's common for all three options, in addition to removing the extra money going into CIPs, that's what we're presenting in option number one. Option number two is a slight variation of that, so we're transferring $600,000 from the general fund to Upper York Creek as opposed to the $800,000. What this will allow us to do is still maintain $100,000 in the streets fund, put $25,000 in the... in the equipment replacement fund, and then put $75,000 into the civic CIP fund for repairs of buildings and maintenance. So that's option number two. Option number three is transferring $450,000 to Upper York Creek. So you can see they go down from 800 to 600 to 450. Again, on the flip side of that, what we're able to do if we reduce it to 450 is to fund $200,000 for streets, to fund $50,000 to go towards an equipment replacement fund, and then to fund $100,000 to be put in a fund for civic repair and maintenance. For all three of these scenarios, you'll see our general fund net position remains at 25%. So you'll see our estimated revenues are $13,104,000. Our estimated expenses are $12,900,000. Revenue less expenses, $182,000. Our estimated net position leaving us at 3.2 million, and then our percentage of expenses is 25,000, or sorry, 25%. And that being said, there is a little wiggle room in that 25%. You have about $30,000 additional to spend that you can add to any particular category and still stay within that 25%. However, we know that throughout the year, certain things come up, and we, you know, we will come to council asking for budget adjustments, you know, for unforeseen items.
How much additional revenue above and beyond the $1.4 million anticipated from Measure D are we projecting for this next, this fiscal year?
Well, last year, our estimated revenues that we're looking to end is $11.1 million, and here we're looking at that 13.1, so you take 1.4 away from that. Sorry, I'm trying to think about.
$600,000.
Yeah, $600,000, $700,000.
So there's $600,000 in addition to the $1.4 million from the sales tax.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Okay. Measure D funds, the next, in addition to asking staff to look at removing $800,000 and putting it towards Upper York Creek, it was also asked what the, if we could characterize the use of Measure D funds, while it is hard to do that because they are general fund money, so they do get put right into general fund, we try to do our best estimate based on what the parameters, because when we established the budget, we looked at what Measure D funds, the pamphlets, the fact sheets that went out for Measure D. So that's what we kind of based our, our budget on. One item that I did find out from Uni Services, who does our sales tax projections, I did find out for everything for Measure D, while it all goes into general fund, we do get a separate check for, for that specific Measure D fund, so we can actually really accurately track how much we're getting in. That was something I did not know about, and then once I consulted with Uni Services, they said we do actually get a separate check. So that will be great for us to be able to track exactly how much does come from that half-cent sales tax. So a little bit of background on Measure D, don't expect you to be able to see this from this, this far away. This was the fact sheet for Measure D that was put together by the city. It was available to the city as well as, I believe this was some of the information that was, that was distributed by, you know, various council members, by the chamber, by various organizations who wanted to see Measure D being passed. Within the Measure D fact sheet, it covered what is Measure D. So it is a half a cent percent, half a percent local transactions and use tax. It did require a majority of voter approval, which is 50% plus one. It was to be used to assist in funding critical unmet needs. The revenue supports the city's general fund. All revenue is locally controlled, which means if the state decides to do something like that wonderful triple flip that we're all familiar with, they could not touch the Measure D funds, so it is all locally controlled. And it is going to raise approximately $1.4 million for the first year for fiscal year 1718. In the fact sheet, it also contained information on why there's a need for additional local revenue. The city is not able to fund needed repairs and upgrades for streets, parks, city buildings. The forecasted expenses, including those over which the city has little or no control or outpacing revenues. The city has inadequate funding, fund reserves, or rainy day fund to respond to unbudgeted emergencies. And without new revenue, the city faces tough choices with nonessential services, especially vulnerable to budget reductions. An initial part of the fact sheet was what would Measure D revenue be used for. Assist the city in maintaining existing levels of service for police, fire, library, recreation. Avoid reductions in nonessential services, especially the library and recreational programs. Provide some funding towards infrastructure for roads, sidewalks, curbing, parks, municipal buildings, and provide some funding or other, provide some funding for other unmet needs. So that was all information in the fact sheet. I do want to go back to the, the page before. The forecasting expenses for the things that the city has little or no control, some of those, we're going to work on next year's budget, on actually breaking some of those expenses out. One in particular is our unfunded liabilities for PERS. This year alone, it's about $633,000 that the city has to pay, to pay for the unfunded PERS. They are expecting within the next couple of years, that number's going to double, that the city has to pay. So those are things the city has absolutely no control over. One of the other things that we, we have little or no control over is our increase in our, our, our general liability insurance that we have to pay. One of the other items that came up that's really hitting our budgets this year, primarily in recreation and also in library, is the increase in minimum wage. So that's something that, this is one of the first large increases that we're having, so you're going to see it. Over the next couple of years, you'll see the trickle-down effect for that. Now that the minimum wage has increased, while we've, we've increased it for our hourly workers, what you're going to start seeing is the other salaries for other positions are going to have to start also going up to keep in line with that minimum wage increasing as well. So those are just some of the items that the city really doesn't have any control over. So I tried to put this in one neat little Measure D characterization of spending charts. So the first column is for the 52 budget, so that was the budget that city staff presented on May 2nd. So you'll see approximately how much could be attributed towards Measure D additional funding. Street repairs, $250,000. Vehicle replacement fund, $100,000. Civic impact fund for building repair and replacement, $200,000. The care program for the low-income subsidies for our water wastewater is $90,000. Flood control project is about $262,000. General liability insurance increase, this is again just for the general fund, was about $10,000. Increase in employee salary and benefits costs, $240,000. So what that encompasses is the benefits, so that encompasses our unfunded liabilities as well as increase in our healthcare costs, as well as increase in, in salaries per MOUs and per council, council direction. In part-time for library employees, over the, and that's $30,000, over the past two budget cycles, the Friends and Foundation for the library has graciously covered 100% of the cost for our library's part-time staff members. So only staff that was in the library's budget for general fund were full-time staff members. Friends and Foundation did cover the rest of it. It was always the goal that Friends and Foundation, that we would slowly start transitioning some of those part-time staff members over. This is the first year that we're able to do that and maintain the same level of service and funding from Friends and Foundation. Friends and Foundation, because it is a part-time salary, part-time staff member salary with the increase in general, or with the increase in minimum wage, that really did take a hit. So we're, basically, they're paying the same amount for part-time staff members in their budget this year. In addition, the $30,000 is being moved over to the general fund because that's approximately how much more it's costing us because of the increase in, in minimum wage. Funding half of the fireworks show at $20,000. The ADA transition plan of $213,000. Again, that's, it's a multi-year plan that's going to be $213,000 for the first five years each year. And then also repairs to government buildings of $105,000. So that brings us just to about $1.5 million. And then the next three columns, you'll see option one, option two, and option three. I didn't, I couldn't quite figure out how to do the math on it on the bottom part, so I'm just kind of showing what the, the actual increase is, knowing Measure D funds aren't going to be paying for this. So you'll just see a little bit in the shift. Primarily, look at the top four lines. So you'll see funding Upper York Creek Dam removal at $800,000, $600,000, and $450,000. You'll see the decrease in street repairs, vehicle replacement fund, and then civic impact, and you'll see it reduced down to zero in option one. You'll see it go up a little slightly higher in option two, and then option three even higher as it balances out. Any questions on, on that section before I move on to the next?
Is, is now a time to ask about Measure T?
Measure T is not general fund, so Measure T is for the, is for the transportation. We won't start receiving those monies until fiscal year 2019.
2019?
Yes, so we will not see any of that in 2018. That goes into effect after Measure, Measure A sunsets, that's the flood control project. Measure A will sunset. As soon as Measure E sunsets, Measure T goes into place, but we won't start receiving money until 2019.
Okay, thank you.
But there's requirements that we need to meet to be able to get our full funding from Measure T?
That is correct. We have to maintain the same levels that we've previously maintained, and I believe, I can check with Erica, is it 1617 or 1516 numbers?
It was 8, 9, and 10.
Sorry, 8, 9, and 10, so further back. So fiscal years, 8, 9, and 10, what they look at, they look at what we spent on our streets and road maintenance for those years. We have to maintain the same level that we did in those years in order to receive the Measure T funds, and I don't have those numbers offhand.
How did you, how did you decide to characterize flood control project as a, as a potential Measure D funding project?
It was one of the larger items. It is something that we, that we have to finish, we have to take care of, and general fund has to pay for it. So that goes, to me, that would go in line with some of the expenses that we have, that we have little or no control over, and that, that's one of them, because the items that we have to finish on the flood control project, if things, if things were done timely, they actually should have been taken care of years ago, and it's, there are things that we are having to, to still try to correct and to finish. Like the dam.
Yeah. Would it be fair to state that there is a certain amount of art in categorizing expenditures as Measure D as opposed to just general fund expenditures?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, and then.
One time, oh, go ahead.
Excuse me. Yeah, go ahead, please.
You know, I hope we spend more time on the sort of above the line and the transfers, but I don't think we should overlook the fact that we also increased salaries for several employees. I believe still in the budget is an additional position in the clerks department that I think is really warranted. We created a new recreation position. We increased the fire chief's time and the fire marshal's time. So, you know, maybe at some point when we actually produce a budget, there'll be a cover letter, but I think that already built in the budget, we've done a number of things for staffing and community services that were part of the objective.
My, my question only is with respect to Measure A for the moment. And that is, obviously, we have a significant Measure A account with the county or with the district. But on the other hand, those monies really are dedicated to paying off the state revolving fund if and when we get them, but they're not going to be sufficient to fully pay off the state revolving fund with that liability extending into the 2020s, somehow 2027, 2028 sticks in my head. Am I roughly right about that? So at some point, we're going to face further significant general, general fund liability relating to the state revolving fund that was used to finance the flood control project.
That is correct. The S, Measure, Measure A funds were used as a guarantee for the state revolving fund loan, for the SRF loan. So as soon as we are able to draw down, that money is going to get paid directly towards SRF. The good thing that that will do is paying, paying a big chunk of it off at one time, which legally we have to do, by the way, by the virtue of how that contract is written, that will actually eliminate, they don't call it interest, but there are fees that you pay on it, so that will actually eliminate a substantial amount of fees that we do have to pay, to pay to SRF. And then our regular minimum, minimum payment per year is $526,000. And so we are planning on taking as much Measure, anything else that we're getting from Measure A for drawdown, it's going, it's going directly over to pay the SRF loan off, and then in addition, we'll have a little bit more from general fund. However, that shouldn't happen during the 1718 fiscal year, it should be subsequent years after that. It will get paid off a lot earlier than the projections on the SRF loan, just because of this large bulk that we're going to be paying at one point.
Okay, but it is a general fund contingent liability, or a general fund liability at some point, and it's significant.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And how much is in the Measure A fund within the county? What is that, the level of that?
I believe it's about $5 million. It's whatever we put in the budget this year to pay towards SRF. That's basically, the revenue comes in, and then the expense goes right back out. I believe it's roughly $5 million.
Yeah.
Can I ask another question? Some of these fund transfers, there's substantial money from Public Works going into two CIP funds, 763 and 773. Can you tell me what those are exactly? I couldn't find.
Are those the amounts or the, the numbers?
No, the amounts, the numbers. It was like $708,000 roughly going into CIP account 763, $679.5 going into 773. Since I don't have a CIP with fund numbers on it, I wasn't sure what that is.
I am going to ask our Public Works Director to come up. She's more familiar with the CIP funds.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the general categories are.
She's my resident expert.
Good morning. So the, the, those two fund numbers are the sewer and wastewater lines, and what we'd like to do this year is we're transferring those monies out, showing that that money's coming out of operating and going into CIP projects such as the Bell Canyon intake tower, the wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1 upgrades, the inflow weir, the weir measurement for Bell Canyon, and other projects that were.
Does it relate to the rate study? Is it, is that projects that are in the rate study as cash-funded? Is that what these transfers are doing, is getting the cash in there to fund them?
Yes, to fund the, the design for those projects. Not necessarily the rate study, those projects have been, been budgeted since this, already this past year.
Yeah, it's just a little confusing to me because it's a million and a half of cash going to CIP, and I thought in our rate study, we basically cover the CIP projects with the cash that's generated by the rates.
That, that is correct. So the amount that we're transferring, we're taking it out of the operations budget. The, the CIP budget and operations budgets are two different budgets. So we're basically removing it from our operations budget because we're getting the revenues in, and then we're transferring it right into the CIP budget. So at that point, when the CIPs are ready to start, that money's held in that other budget and that other fund as opposed to being part of operations. So yes, those transfers are to address cash fund, some of the items that were in the rate study.
And is that being transferred from enterprise fund operating or from general fund operating?
From, from enterprise fund, so from enterprise fund revenues over into an enterprise fund CIP.
I got it, no, thank you.
I know they're confusing.
One other comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I thought this page was important because it reflects the staff's ability to respond specifically to council direction. On the column marked May the 30th as option one, you will see that the staff was able to specifically adjust the transfers to include the full $800,000 as directed by council. Because, in my opinion, there was some flexibility on the council's direction, I ask April to come up with another option, which is option two and option three. These options continue to observe council direction to not reduce the recreation budget and to not reduce the library budget. I'm very pleased with the ability of the staff, your staff, to respond affirmatively to the policy direction that we received. Options two and three continue to retain, even in the embryonic state, the vehicle replacement fund concept, the civic impact fund concept, and the street repair. And I'm hoping that council will provide the incubator, if you will, for these embryonic transfers. But all in all, I think the department manager stepped forward in splendid fashion to meet the directives of the council. All right, is there further presentation?
There, I can keep going. I'm sure all of you want to hear me talk some more. So again, a quick overview, this was a request, I believe, from council members. This was a request, I believe, from Councilmember Dorian, as well as I've heard from the public as well. Seeing the year-over-year expenses, and this categorizes all funds, so I just did analysis of all funds together as opposed to breaking it up by general fund, water fund, wastewater fund, because that is going to take a little bit more time to do. But you can see I did a five-year analysis. So from fiscal year '14 through the proposed budget of fiscal year '18 is, for salaries, you can see right around the 9% mark this year was actually the first year. It's a 7% increase. For benefits, you can see the 7%, 3%, 11%, and then 5%. I don't know offhand why the spike to the 11% last year was. I believe that might have been the first year we had to start funding the unfunded liabilities. For, oh, that's right, sorry, the firefighters. Because the firefighters went on full-time with us. So that's, or not full-time, they went from being contract to actually employee. So that's what the difference was. And you'll see the number for fiscal year '17, '18. After talking with the HR department, we are actually going to add a specific line item for per's unfunded liabilities, so the council and the public can see exactly how much that does cost us every year. Right now, it's all lumped under the Code 2045. What we're going to do is change 2045 to just what the current employees, basically what the city pays on their behalf. We're going to have 2047 is just going to be unfunded liabilities, so that way you can see what it's really going to look like. Again, this year, the per's unfunded liabilities is about $660,000. So it's quite, it's quite significant. Communications budget, you'll see that we actually had a decrease for a few years. Last year, it went up 2%. This year, the estimate is 29%. And the bulk of that is due to the voice-over IP conversion, which in the long run, the city will save money because we will not be using traditional phone lines and using internet lines. Computer equipment, again, you'll see it very much fluctuates from a, you know, 32% increase to a 96% decrease to a 49%. So this one definitely fluctuates, just depending on what the needs are. Supplies and services, you'll see again the five-year trend, what the percentage difference is year-over-year. Training and conference, for years, the city staff was not able to attend training. And the past two years, we've really been encouraged to do training to continue on with our education. Contracts, you'll see the difference, the percentages, the decrease in the contracts. Primarily, the big decrease is one, firefighters from going from contracts to actually employees. And then the other was changing, last year, changing the building official position instead of being contract actually to being an employee. So you'll see the decrease there. Contributions, offhand, I can't remember what was in this category, but you'll see there's been an increase. Two of the major increases for the contributions this year is the care rate and also the low-income subsidies for residential as well for businesses. Capital equipment, so you'll see we're starting to add a little bit more into capital equipment that we're purchasing, primarily vehicles. Equipment, software, and maintenance, again, you'll see the increases and decreases over the various years. Last year, software, the equipment maintenance and software maintenance, primarily, we had a bump up in our contract with Marin IT. And then this year is also another slight increase. But they are still, it's not to the point yet where it warrants us having a full-time employee for IT. It still warrants us to be able to outsource those services. Property liability insurance, so again, you can see the increases over the years. Utilities, I was very happy that they did not go up as much as I thought. I know PG&E this year had a pretty substantial rate increase. You see that primarily in the percent increase in 1617. 1718, you'll see a slight decrease, and that has to do with our, some of our voice-over IP, that we're able to take that out of the budget. And then vehicle maintenance and equipment, again, you can see that the increases and then the, you know, the increases over the various years. So I want to provide a quick summary of the major funds. As you can see, water, wastewater funds for revenues and expenses, there were not any changes between the proposed budget on May 2nd and then this proposed budget. You'll see the differences are in the general fund. So the general fund revenues projected from 5-2 was 13, a little over $13 million. The updated numbers are 13.1 million. Why we had an increase in our property taxes, what we thought it was going to be, we actually had a decrease in the amount that when we are able to close out the Department of Water Resources grant for the flood control project, they are holding $237,000. The city will get, should be able to get that money back. I was estimating initially it was about $150,000 that could go back into the general fund. However, that number was incorrect after consulting with Tracy Parkowski, our grants manager. It's about $30,000, and the rest of it will go directly towards paying SRF. And then for expenses of general fund, the proposed budget as of 5-2 is 12 million, 12.8 million. And then the new 5-30 proposed budget under either Options 1 or 1, 2, or 3 is at 12.9 million. So a little, slightly higher, but that was offset by the increase in revenues. And right now, staff is seeking council direction on which one of the options they are so inclined to have staff follow, or some variation of those options, as well as the funding for the nonprofits. It is staff's hope, and we do have to adopt a budget by May 30th of each year. It is our hope that we will get, based on council direction today, get a budget to you by June 13th for your adoption. So that will give us plenty of time to be able to adopt by June 30th.
June 30th.
Oh, sorry, June 30th, not May 30th. June 30th.
All right. I've been requested by a council member to declare a five-minute break, which normally would last about seven minutes. Good late morning. Let me reconvene our special meeting. Are there any further initial comments to staff before I open the public hearing? Oh, you finished your report?
I have one additional item. Our Chief of Boden actually pointed it out to me, so I just want to at least make the council aware. In the Police Department's budget, with the request for the additional dispatcher position, I did not actually lower the overtime costs and then the part-time costs in their budget. So the total amount for those costs is an additional $40,000 that will be taken out of what the expenses are currently in the budget. So I just wanted to make you aware of that for any decisions, if that's an additional $40,000 that's available, that I erroneously didn't get taken out of the budget, so...
So the net cost of the dispatch is 40, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct. So I want to apologize, but I thought that would, might be important for the council to know.
All right. Any further initial comments to staff before I open up the public hearing? So let me open up the public hearing before we get to further council discussion. Yes, please.
My question is just about cash balances, which are sort of your beginning factor in your budget process and cycle. And when I looked at a page from a financial statement that gave us basically your assets and liabilities, I noted that General Fund has more than $11 million. And it's never really even in the notes clearly broken down to show us exactly how much of that is sort of free cash that's unrestricted. And so I'm thinking it might be helpful to the council at some point for the general fund to break out and then footnote anything that's a dollar amount that's restricted as opposed to unrestricted. Then they can see where you start your number on your CAFRA and on your budget, and all comes clear. But I think I heard questions asked by members of the ad hoc committee for the same thing. They want to know for the water enterprise and the wastewater enterprise, what is your cash balance as of July the 1st, 2017? Unrestricted and restricted for each one? Then they can jump off those figures and do some of their own forecasting as a check and balance against the Hansford model, for example. And without that information, they really, they're hamstrung from doing that with a degree of accuracy. So if that's possible, April, if one of the members of the council wants to suggest it, I'm just general public, I'm not a member of the council, but I just wanted to raise that point on cash and make sure that we're absolutely clear that your beginning figure of 3.4 million is correct in view of the fact that more than $11 million is disclosed by the auditors as of last June 2016. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Stell, 1115 Chiles Avenue. I just want to say, first of all, that I'm very grateful to the community for having understood the need for Measure D and having passed Measure D, which resulted in the city staff being able to put together, I thought, a great budget on May 2nd, a balanced budget and one that had some surplus in it that could be used to fund those nonprofits who really need our support and who are really an important part of our community. I also think that budget did a great job in meeting some previously unmet needs like repair and maintenance and equipment and all of that. I thought Councilmember Culberstein's suggestion of looking into leasing vehicles instead of buying was a great suggestion. Obviously, that impacted the budget. I don't think it's right to use general fund dollars for the York Creek Dam. I don't envy you. I don't know what the answer is to that problem. I'm glad I'm not in your shoes. But I don't think it's right to use general funds. That is not what we voted for in Measure D, as you saw from, as we were reminded when we looked at the fact sheet. So I hope that you will take that into consideration. I know it's a difficult situation. It's a difficult thing you have to do. And again, I'm glad you're doing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Stell?
Pat Dell, 25 Sand One Court. I have three things. Number one, I noticed that the City Clerk's Office sacrificed $1,200. You know, in my opinion... city clerk's office sacrificed $1,200. You know, in my opinion, the city clerk's office and certainly Cindy Baker is the glue that holds everything else together. And I don't think that that office should have to sacrifice anything. I think if she needs that, it's legitimate and you should put it back in. I appreciate, April, your showing the salary increases. But what I requested some time back is the percentage of salaries as a percentage of the entire budget. How much has that increased through the years? And I think that is a lot more revealing than simply saying, you know, the salaries went up 9%. That could be any number of things. And then thirdly, I'd like to say that I disagree totally with the last woman. I think you've heard mountains of evidence showing why the York Creek Dam should be financed of the general fund, and I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name's Anthony McKelley. I live 1125 Cornella. And I want to talk about a lady that works at City Hall that most of you probably don't even know worked there. Her name is Cambria, and she finds all the records that me, as a public person, come to find. And I will tell you, a lot of records are missing. But what records are available, she does find them, and she works for Cindy. And I don't know how her hiring is affected in this budget, but I would recommend very strongly that you rehire this lady. She drives all the way from Sassoon, an hour and a half one way, three hours a day, and she loves her job, though. Because I asked her, how can you just go look for files? And she says, I love doing this. And she likes working here. So, I would hope that you would keep that position, because if you ask Cindy Black to do it, your city clerk, she doesn't have the time to do any of that. And I'm not a person who likes big government at all. In fact, I wish half of them could go away like it did 40 years ago. We had half, less than half the staff you have now. But that is a position I really feel you need to keep here, because I'm not the only one that uses that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any further public comment? All right. Let me close the public comment. I must say that the finance director put together a terrific report. Obviously, it took a lot of time. And maybe I should begin a little bit so the community knows very clearly where I am with respect to the issue of monies going from the general fund to support the water and wastewater enterprises. It's not proper municipal finance. My text is Government Finance, Second Edition by Gerard Miller. It's published by the Government Finance Officers Association. And it says, "Fees and charges normally should be sufficient to cover related costs unless an intended public purpose achieved by subsidizing the activity." That's when you're talking about fee-based enterprises. Obviously, I have no problem whatsoever with the care program. I thought the council moved in the correct direction, clearly, when it sought to deal with some unintended consequences from the rate increases. I have no problem with going back and revisiting the care program if more needs to be done there. But that's the right way to go in terms of using general fund money. It's not to subsidize the water and wastewater funds. I should point out that when the rate increase went through in terms of Prop 218 last year and the Prop 218 notice that went out in September, September 27th was when it was authorized by the city council, but it very clearly said in terms of uses of proceeds, major capital projects, York Creek upper dam removal mitigation, $6.5 million. It was absolutely contemplated that it would be taken care of out of the wastewater, out of the water fund. I've attended all of the meetings of the ad hoc committee. I've listened to Mr. Kenneth Decker, who was the municipal rate consultant. He spoke twice to this issue, and he stressed in both appearances that the water and wastewater fund should be self-supporting. They needed to stand on their own bottom. And he also made the further practical point that as we look down the road, and it's come up today with respect to PERS liabilities, that municipalities generally, and that obviously includes ours, are going to be faced with significant additional stress on our general fund as we move forward here. And so, that too, just at the practical level, argues against any movement of money to a fee-supported enterprise that should be supported out of the fees. We're dealing with many difficult problems in the short term with respect to our general fund. You know, it's been asserted that at times that we should be thinking outside the box. Well, to me, it's not thinking outside the box to move money from the general fund to the water and wastewater funds. To me, it's potentially an invitation to litigation and financial disaster. I also should point out that any money moved to the, let me pass this out. That any money moved from the general fund to the water fund really is a subsidy to big users. It's what it is. We've got very major users outside city limits in our water enterprise. What I have on this paper is the contract amounts of these users. Some probably use close to their contract amounts, some perhaps do not. But when you look at the number, when you look at some of the users like Bullure, Hall, Franciscan Estate, Louis Martini, Meadowwood Napa Valley, Nebam Copula, to a lesser extent, Vissatui, these are all very large users of water. And they help pay for our water infrastructure through the charges that get levied on them. And they're not within city limits. They don't pay taxes. They don't pay sales tax. They don't pay property tax to the city, sales tax to the city. We also have large users inside the city in Berenger, CIA, Harvest Inn. In some ways, even a subsidy from the general fund to the water fund benefits them as well. So, from my way of thinking, it's an improper financial practice. And when you look at the Measure D brochure that the city put together, it makes the point that Measure D funds are supposed to be used for, will not be used for purposes other than proper general fund expenditures. I just don't think you can find a financial expert or municipal expert who is generally accepted who would say that this is proper. I can tell you that I've talked to a number of electeds in the county here, and none of them think it's proper at all. I also don't see how it will help much, quite frankly. The city hasn't said to us what the impact on rates would be of an $800,000 this year or next year. I question whether there could be any real impact due to our bonding requirements. But to me, without that baseline information even going down this road, it's kind of like the Republicans adopting that health care bill without hearing from the Congressional Budget Office. It's not responsible. So, but I also have concerns, too, from the bonding point of view. It's very clear from the discussion at the ad hoc committee that we will not have access to the state revolving fund until we're in compliance with the 120% net revenue requirement. Also, extremely clear from the prior discussion at the city council level, but also from Mr. Decker at the ad hoc meetings, that a contribution from the general fund to the water enterprise, where we're seriously deficient in terms of meeting the net revenue requirement, will not help in meeting the net revenue requirement. It just won't from a contractual and legal point of view. Now, as I said, we have to come into compliance with that net revenue requirement. We have to come into compliance as quickly as possible, because it's also very clear that the state revolving fund is our cheapest source of capital significantly, by a significant measure. And to protect our ratepayers down the road, including not far off down the road, we want to access the state revolving funds to the maximum extent we can. There can be a good argument about whether we should go beyond the state revolving funds or not. But at minimum, no one can dispute that we need to access those state revolving funds, and we need to do so as rapidly as we can. We're also in a position with respect to Upper York Creek Dam where we just can't put it off, because we've got grants, both a federal grant and a state grant, and they provide that we must have construction underway next year, or maybe even complete construction, in order to keep those grants. And they total close to $2 million, and we obviously don't want to jeopardize losing those grants. And so, and then also, again, with respect to the state revolving fund, as we all know, we're under a cease and desist order from the Regional Water Quality Control Board with very strict timelines. And our financial plan does depend on borrowing from the state revolving fund with respect to those very substantial improvements. So, beyond, from my perception, that it's improper municipal finance to transfer monies from the general fund to the water fund, quite frankly, I don't really see what it gets us. I also should add that, as I read our bond covenants, we're not in a position to reduce rates in any event until we come into compliance with 120% net revenue requirement, which, under the best of circumstances, will not be until 2018, 2019, as I understand the prior presentations from the finance director. With respect to the, quote, negligence argument that's been made, I don't buy it. There are any number of examples on our water system particularly where we have not done what we should have done over many years. I went back and checked the water and the infrastructure subcommittee report that I authored back in 2010. And because I did remember this, we were first ordered to put decent monitoring equipment in Bell Canyon in 1973. Here we are getting around to it in 2017. Tank 1A, or excuse me, that water tower has been on our agenda to deal with for many, many years. And so, I don't see the argument that, quote, "city negligence," end quote, is relevant to this. These expensive capital improvements belong in the water fund, in the wastewater fund. They are a ratepayer obligation. They're not a general fund obligation. And I think we're going to hurt ourselves, both in the short run and in the long run, if we move monies from the general fund to the water and wastewater funds. That's my comment with respect to that after a lot of study and thought. Mr. White?
Well, you know, I agree with you.
Sure, that's why I called on you second.
I think the May 2nd budget that was presented by our staff was a great budget. I think it was well thought out. It addressed everything that we were looking for in Measure D and the increase in revenue is to put monies aside for our infrastructure. Our general fund needs that we were falling behind with, to take monies and put it into the water fund, I think, is irresponsible. And it breaks the trust of everybody who voted for Measure D, including myself. I mean, if I had known this upfront, that our council was going to try to recategorize the funds out of the general fund, I don't know that I would have voted for Measure D. So, I think it's fiscally irresponsible. I think the budget that was presented to us on May 2nd was fiscally, very fiscally responsible. And I would still go with that. I think maybe there's a few tweaks here and there. I like the idea of the parking lot, funding that south of Sunshine. Thank you. And also, I think, you know, if we've got extra funds, there's a few road projects that need to be brought up to the surface that, I mean, we've heard for the past several months how bad Pratt Avenue is and how dangerous that crosswalk is. I'd rather see our general fund monies going directly to that rather than subsidizing something that's really outside of our general fund purview. So, I guess that's how I stand on it.
Mr. Doring?
I do appreciate the comments, and I think in general, most of what you are saying is correct. However, I think there are some significant flaws in your rationale and arguments. First of all, there's absolutely no evidence before us that anyone is suggesting the use of Measure D funds, and I put that in quotes, "to fund York Creek Dam." We've heard from our finance director that we have revenues above and beyond Measure D funds. So, for someone to make the argument that now we're just focusing on Measure D funds and not general fund to support partially the removal of the dam is inaccurate. It's not the case. You're also misleading the public by suggesting that these contributions would be ongoing. You're talking about our PERS liability, other liabilities. There's no question we have contingent liabilities coming forward. But the suggestion I'm making in terms of using general fund monies for York Creek is short-term, one year, two years, and it goes away. We're not going to continue to fund the water enterprise through the general fund. I agree that an ongoing subsidy, as you call it, would be highly improper. But I think, given the 25-year breach of trust by this city in not removing that dam, there's a strong equitable argument to use some of that money that we have this year in additional revenues above and beyond Measure D to fund the York Creek Dam removal. And I think the argument that we're subsidizing wineries, well, yeah, but we subsidize our residents who live outside of the city, on the waterside with our care contribution. We may even end up subsidizing some business. I don't know if any are outside of the city. But we are subsidizing, so that argument is not persuasive to me. In general, I agree with the mayor that we don't want to embark on a pattern and practice of subsidizing the general fund. I wholeheartedly agree with you. That would be best practices. But just from an equitable and historical point of view, the fact that the York Creek Dam removal project started out at $1.5 million and through delay and not getting to that project has increased to $6.5 million, some would say that that is putting an undue financial burden on some of our residents. So, I'm, again, I agree with you that we shouldn't have an ongoing practice, but this is a limited practice for this particular circumstance, because I think equity justifies it. Now, we talked about revenues, but we really haven't talked about expenses. I think there's room, there are a number of increased expenses. There are a number of areas where I think we can find even more money beyond the revenue that we're obtaining this year to even make a stronger argument that some money should go to York Creek. I see, again, the city attorney department. I see, again, the, the city attorney department. I see ADA is maybe a little bit overly aggressive this year. There are other areas that I would be willing to look at to not cut, we're not cutting, we're reducing proposed increases. So, I, I think there's a, a significant amount of money there on the expense side that we can use for other things and redirect. I do want to maintain, for sure, a 25% reserve. There's no question. Frankly, I think it should be at 30%. We're going to get there, hopefully. I'm more optimistic. So, all of these things are, are flexible. We have to look at both the revenue side and the expense side, and I think I would remind council that this is a budget, and it's not set in stone, and it's something that we could work with. We, we, this is our hopes and dreams for the future, and if some urgent matter comes, then we have to be flexible. There may be something that overrides York Creek. Could happen. I don't know what that would be in the short term, and we have to be flexible enough to do that. But I'm, I'm not as concerned about using that money right now, and, and I'd like to look, have more detailed drilling down of some of the expenses in some departments.
All right. I do think my argument was in terms of general fund expense generally, not particularly Measure D. Measure D is just a component of revenue coming to the general fund.
Well, you argued that it was a breach of trust because we're going to be using Measure D funds, or there was a proposal to do that, and that got out into the community, and I think it was misleading, and it actually caused me to look more carefully at revenues and where our revenues are coming from and to isolate out. And I would remind council that we, we never did categorize the use of Measure D funds at the time we were debating the issue at the city council. I argued at that time in September of 2016 that we would attempt to allocate by percentage the uses of measure, anticipated Measure D funds. We knew it was going to be $1.4 million. We never really did do the characterization that we're doing now several months later. So, to suggest, you know, this is Measure D monies or not, it's really a, it's kind of a dubious way of thinking about it because we're well after the fact. Had we gone through this process that we're going, that we did today, we could then say, yeah, we're strained from our, from our percentages, but we never did do that. We never did do that.
Well, again, keep in mind, with respect to Proposition 218 and the notice that went out in September, it was very clear there that York Creek Dam would be funded out of the water funds. And certainly, when I look at the city--
And it will be to a large extent, correct?
Yes.
To a significant extent, yes. But again, my basic point, I don't want to monopolize time here, is that it's not appropriate, even on a one-time basis, to take monies out of the general fund and support the enterprises. And certainly, when you look at the fact sheet, it's all in terms of what are proper general fund expenses. And just as the vice mayor said, too, if, if we have general fund money to spend, to my wife thinking it should be absolutely devoted to our roads and sidewalks.
But, go ahead.
You know, I, my sense is that three of us up here want to proceed and look at these options, and it's already 20 to 12. I would only point out that after that Prop 218 notice went out, Councilmember Doring asked our manager at that time about the use of these funds for the York Creek Dam, and her answer was, you could take it out. And so, I think we are visiting something, and we are going into issues that are going to be discussed when the ad hoc recommendations come to us, and I think what we should do is focus on where we're going to transfer money and what our adjustments should be.
Look, let me be clear. You can legally do it. I'm not arguing with that. My point is that it's improper municipal finance, financial practice, and I believe that, that municipal financial consultants would widely accept that, and certainly, Mr. Decker made that point before the ad hoc committee twice.
Well, I, you know, I regret the fact that you led him into that discussion. I mean, you came to the ad hoc committee with a list of issues for them to discuss that went beyond, frankly, what the council had asked them to discuss, and he showed up at an ad committee primed to address the question of transferring money from the general fund to the enterprise funds. And I regret that that happened. I think we should save all of these issues for the rate study discussion and not, not cloud this whole conversation with that. I, I would prefer to look at these specific transfers and look at the adjustments.
Well, Mr. Ellsworth, and then certainly, we're headed there. I can see that.
Yeah, I think, I think that that's a, a good way to go. I think you brought up the, our water customers, water partners outside the city. I've, I've agendized a discussion on that for June 13th. If it's busy that day, it might get bumped to the subsequent meeting, but I think that's a very complex discussion that, it's a good one for us to all to get into, so that'll be coming up soon. But it's, it's pretty complicated, so I think it deserves special focus.
All right. Let me see how to proceed here. Why don't those of you that support the transfer of monies to Upper York Creek Dam advise whether it's $800,000, $600,000, $400,000, which of the options presented you would like to see the city adopt, or if there's some modified proposition? That would be fine, too.
I'd like to modify it. I'll just, I'd like to start with the fund transfers, just throw some things out for discussion. First of all, I'm not in favor of eliminating the road maintenance transfer of $250,000. I don't think anybody is, you know, we definitely need monies there. We hear about that all the time. What I would do instead, I went back and looked at our draft ADA report. I don't know that we have the final one yet, but it suggested $80,000 a year for the civic improvements and 45 for the curb ramps in the initial years to do the priority projects. That's about $125,000. So, I would, and we are transferring 213. I'd take like $90,000 out of that.
If I can maybe have our public works director speak to that?
Well--
Well, I believe--
This is just my opinion about what these amounts should be. Beyond that, we are going to get a grant to do some sidewalks downtown, and so, by the time we get to year two and year three, the monies that were in the report may be mitigated somewhat by the grant funds that are coming in. So, I'm suggesting that we, we keep the 250 in the streets and we drop the ADA to $125,000. I would further recommend that we eliminate the civic CIP, which is $200,000. We're about to embark on revisiting the RFPs, revisiting what we're going to do with Adams Street, and a major component of that is how much revenue there might be to the city to undertake some of these more major projects. And I would suggest that we could postpone for one year transferring into the civic CIP, also because we do have impact fee money sitting there that's available. And lastly, I would cut the equipment replacement by $50,000. So, the total of what I'm suggesting is an adjustment of $340,000 of fund transfers. 90 in the ADA, leave the streets where they are, 50 in equipment replacement, and 200 the civic.
I think it might be useful to hear from the public works director on the ADA issue if she wishes to speak to it. Again, I'm in a difficult position where I would oppose this, but my further concern here is the risk of litigation to the city if we don't move forward at a greater rate with respect to ADA compliance.
Actually, it's pretty darn, I, I would go along with it because we do know now that we are getting the OABAG grant, and I think it's a perfect reason why to back down that number. It won't be always that case. That's just, that's just the street side, but then you still have your civic improvements that we still need to dedicate muddening for.
But again, in the, at some point, and I, and correct me if, if I'm wrong, but with respect to the OABAG grant of 1.2 million, there's a general fund match with respect to it that we're going to need to make at some point. That's not in this budget, but would be in next year's budget?
Correct.
And do you recall offhand what the match is?
I believe it's $300,000, but we also thought we could use gas tax and part of Measure T.
Okay.
We just have to confirm, which I believe when I look at the 2008, '09, '10 fiscal years, we did include curb ramp and sidewalk improvements in that fund because we have to make sure that we have to match with the Measure T funds what we did in the past, the usage of those funds. So, if it wasn't strictly all pavement, we can use some of those Measure T funds as match as well. That's, you know--
Thank you.
All right, good. Thanks. All right. Anything for you?
Well, I think, first of all, the, the item for the city clerk should be replaced, the $1,200 software. I think, I think that's pretty important that, that the clerk has what, what she needs to operate. I think that's pretty, it's pretty easy to just put that back in. I would support Mary's recommendations.
All right, Mr. Doring?
Well, I'm, I'm glad that our public works director chimed in on that. It's a very important point of view. I think it is a matter of cash flow when you're thinking about budgets, and what, what is allocated this year may not be the same next year as we change and these, these events unfold. I'm, I'm generally supportive of Councilmember Coburnstein's efforts to find those areas. I also would like to look at our city attorney's budget.
Well, at this point, I guess the question is, what specific direction are you providing to Ms. Metz so that she can come back with, with hopefully a final budget at our June 13th meeting? Is that the hope? That's the hope?
Well, on some specific adjustments, you removed your temporary assistants at the end of the year in the finance department. I think it's very important that we get our financial reports done when we need to. I would put that money back. That's $2,000. We eliminated an intern in the HR department. We're still carrying an intern in the planning department. The planning department did just take over, I believe, 100% of Zinnia's time, and so, for now, I would put off hiring an intern in that department. I have a question about the contract fees in the, in the planning department. In April, we were requested to increase the contract with the M Group by $100,000, and that was to carry us forward, use more money in this fiscal year in May and June, and then the balance of it would be funded in the budget we're looking at now. And it's unclear to me, but I look at the planning, contract services for planning, and it's $140,000. So, I think there's, depending on how much more of that contract we have used, I think there are savings there. I'd like to stick with what was presented to us at the time we were asked to approve it. I agree we should discuss the city attorney's budget. I have a question about the police dispatch. We did just recently, and maybe this isn't possible in the police world, but we recently entered into an agreement with Calistoga to be sharing, sort of on a non-cost basis, inspection services when people needed coverage. If our inspector was out, you know, the Calistoga inspector would step in, and I'm wondering if this is something that is possible on the dispatch side, and, you know, I'd like to investigate a, a little bit more, maybe put that 40,000 back in once we have a definitive response. But I, I think the major area here where, oh, this is really nitpick, but I think we're carrying 40,000 in the budget for the fireworks, and I believe 20 of it is basically already there. So, I, I think we're off there by 20.
Actually, we have to put the full expenditure in the budget, but then the 20,000 is offset by revenues of $20,000 into that same account.
Okay, so you already accounted for those revenues on the revenue side?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great.
Just to be clear, so, the proposed budget for the, the general fund for the, for legal is $670,000, and it looked like, after sharpening of the pencil, that went down to a, a different number, up by 100,000, maybe?
I directed over $100,000 reduction since the last year.
Okay, okay.
Yes, so it went down to 570 for general fund.
Okay, and I, I'd like to see it go down another $100,000.
The difficulty there is that last year, maybe I've got my numbers misplaced, but last year, we undertook to reduce the city attorney's budget by $100,000, but we ended up with budget adjustments at the end of the year, back where we were. Am I roughly right about that?
That is correct. The adopted budget for city attorney for all funds was 642,000. The adjusted is 967,000, and that's where we're estimating our year end. Right now, we're at 790, and then if we take another $100,000 off the general fund. That being said, for this fiscal year, I'm really closely monitoring the, the attorney's budget for our general fund and in particular, our water fund. Right now, because of litigation costs, it is quite possible we might have to come back for another budget adjustment within the next two meetings, primarily right now for the water fund. General fund, I'm really closely monitoring it, but water fund, it looks like we're going to have to come back for another adjustment, and that, those are litigation costs.
Right.
You know, I, I agree that litigation is somewhat unknown, but I would like to have a budget number that we actually shoot for, that, to set expectations on the use of the city attorney. In the last couple of years, the contract service amount has risen quite a bit, and our city attorney now goes to every planning commission meeting. He's here all day. He goes to executive committee meetings, and we often look at what comparable cities pay. We're two, two and a half, three times what Calistoga is paying for services from the same law firm. And I look at the number, I look at the total number, which is $890,000 in the legal department, and I would like to bring that down totally by 200 or 250, along with a policy set by the manager of how, how we use our outside contract legal services and when staff has access to them, when they go to meetings, so that we can try to set reasonable expectations. I mean, being an attorney, if you give me a million dollar budget, I will spend it. What I would like to do is set the level at something that is more appropriate for a city of our size and examine how we're using those services. So, I, I would like to see the all-in 890 number come down a couple hundred thousand dollars to where it was a couple of years ago.
Further back than, because 14, 15, it was 865, so further back than 14, 15. Because currently, we've reduced $100,000 out of the budget, so we're at 790. Are you proposing taking another $100,000 out of general fund?
Yeah, you know, what I--
Or bring it down to 690?
I understand the wastewater. We do have litigate, or the water side.
Water side, yeah.
We have litigation going on there. It's not clear to me, you know, all the money that's lumped in the budget in the wastewater side, I could see maybe 30 or whatever could come out of there. And again, as Councilman Doring said, this is a budget. Things come up, you know, we'll deal with them then, but I think that, you know, and $15,000 on the affordable housing side, I'm not quite sure, you know, what's going on there that's anticipated for next year other than keeping track of our Calderon numbers. But primarily, to me, it's the contract services amount, which I think is in our budget at 490-something. That's--
425.
425 for contracts, $35,000 for billable services, 430 for litigation. I think we need to rein in what we can ourselves, and I think contracts is the services that are being provided, and I think we need a policy in place on when we're using our legal services and for what purpose.
Well, I think, I think having that discussion's certainly worthwhile, but I also think that that's a discussion that needs to be had when our new city manager's on board. That new city manager needs to be very much part of that discussion.
Right, but I, I think we could set the budget and the new city-- Right, but I think we could set the budget and the new city manager, we can talk with the new city manager about the use of those services and how it would proceed.
All right. Anything further? Are the three of you pretty much on board with this direction at this point in time? Do you have enough direction at this point?
And I want to recap real fast to make sure that I've captured everything. So, ADA transition plan, reducing that to $123,000, so it's reducing it $90,000. Equipment replacement to $50,000. Civic improvements to zero. City clerk adding the $1,200 for the software back in. Finance department adding the $6,000 for end-of-year temp help. HR department adding the intern, put that back in. Just re-looking at and confirming the planning department's use of contracts on where we're at with the M Group. City attorney total dollar amount, reducing it about $200,000. So, I'm going to propose 470 from the general fund, 130 from the water, 60 from wastewater, then 30,000 for affordable housing. And then, the only last number that I have is for Upper York Creek. What's the total dollar amount that you're looking at funding for that?
Well, I think we'll wait and see how your numbers come out. When you look at these transfers and you look at the expense adjustments, I don't recall putting back the HR internship program.
Oh, okay, my apologies. I can--
We did talk about, or you talked about, perhaps, setting aside the appropriation for a fifth dispatcher until we--
Right.
--bounce that suggestion off our colleagues in Calistoga to see if they would be amenable.
Right. I think that net number is 40,000.
I think that might have been it. My apologies.
I had one more thing I forgot to mention earlier. Is the government buildings that repairs for the fire station, what is that?
The repairs of the fire station, currently, right now, it's some carpet replacement that's also replacing LED lights. There's also some water damage that they found. However, that, we did find that we had our GO bonds, our general obligation bonds for our fire department. That loan is completely paid off. We do have some residual money that's sitting in our bond, in our account that we held here at the city. So, I've been working with the municipal finance advisor as well as with bond counsel and asking them what appropriate uses for those funds are, and they do believe appropriate uses would be to use those funds for fire department maintenance and repair. So, that means we can pay for it using those funds and not general fund.
Okay, that's great.
So, that's covered.
Yeah.
That's why I'm taking out of the general fund expenses.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure it's covered. Thank you.
Is that, you have enough direction at this point?
Yes, I think the final, any direction's on funding nonprofits.
I think we all agreed that they should be funded.
And then, potentially, next year, from what I'm hearing, potentially, next year, maybe revising the application a little bit to have it more specific on what, because I know there is information on what community involvement they do.
Well, I think there's considerable information there. The difficulty with not-for-profit applications is that they're all performing wonderful services in the community, and the general desire would be mostly to fund them all and not try and draw small distinctions. I must say that we have very responsible not-for-profits in the sense that I don't see our not-for-profit community generally seeking to take advantage of the situation at all. But it would be very hard to draw distinctions, at least in some cases, and I'm terribly thankful this year that we were not put in that position.
I think what Jeff was saying is to focus more on how the nonprofits are aligned with the mission of the city, its core values. And I think they do do that in general. I think just we can get a little bit more detail there.
I do think that there's a specific question in the current questionnaire that tries to get at that. Now, maybe someone can take a look at it and refine the question a little bit, but I think it's basically there. All right. Thank you very much, everybody.